विरास संबद्ध सटक कदेर आस्कियर नाम सटक कदेर मोला महा इत्ते माराटिने नेट्रूम इन्ट्रूम नड़त्ती कुणरुकुणरो इत्ते माराड़ सटक कदेर डी 28वादा आर्मीविडाबे मुनिटे ओवर आणडो उर्णाल माराडागो इरण्टराल माराडागो वरणावर नड़पट्टी कुणरुकुरदि अंदा डिप्पड़ेयल नेट्रे तोडक्कुविडाहु अरे तोडरती इन्ट्रक्की काले सरपु अमरुभु मालयिल पुड़ीविडाहु नड़परेरुकुरदि इत्ते रिक्शीले करंदकुणुल्ला उग्लाने वरे मुदलिल मरमोवंद वरवेरुकुणरे इत्ते निगर्चिके अदास सरपु अमरुभु के तलमीत तांग्गे आई इनवाइटेड अहनर्बल जस्टिस डॉक्टर आ तमिलवाणन अभर्गिन जस्टिस तमिलवाणन अभर्गिन ओर तलेसरन्दा नीतिबदी तलेसरन्दा बडक त्रिज्यरागो तलेसरन्दा माउटन नीतिबद्यागो तलेसरन्दा ओयान नीतिबद्यागो इप्पोर्ट तलेसरन्दा मानिलक्तन डी नगरोर नीतिबद्यतन तलेवरागो मरदरुकुरा डॉक्टर पट्टक पट्टुकुरा पलवेर माराड़गिलिल्लम करुथरंगिलिल्लो उरेनिकर्ती इरुल्ला मूल्य एवे वेलिटुल्ला इव्हुला सरपु कुम उडयवर आ बीएल एमल पीएचडी मूड़ पट्टकले पट्टरवर अवर इन्ट्रक्की तलमीत तांगी नड़त्तरुकुरा अवरडे एनडे वरावेतपुरे काढत्त पड़ियागे अवर तलमीयोर आत्तुपा अदर अपरुको ओवर वरुम पेस्वारल पेस्ट बुडित तपर्क अवर कनकूडे रिमार्क्स सोल्वा इत्ते आराइत्तो पत्थरायमनी इल्लदु ओर मणिकुल मुडित आकवेंडो आकवे ओवर वरुम अवर अनुकुल्डे नैरत्ती सरियाक पैर पड़त्ती कुण्डे पत्थल इल्लदु पत्थरायमनी बढत्तुकुल आ ओवर वरुम तनुडे पेचे बुडितुकुल मारुक कैटकुरुम एवरी पॉट स्पीकर्स शुड शंड टू डिलीवर देयर प्रेसेंटेशन टा 10 तू 12 तू 13 मिनिट्स आ बिफोर 15 मिनिट्स दे मस्ट फिनिश ऑफ देयर स्पीच देन ओनली द एंटीर सेशन बिल एंड अट 1 ओक्ला दैट इस द रीजन वी फिक्स द टाइम लिमिट एंड आवर चैरेट रिकोस्टिंग द अहनर्बल डॉक्टर जस्टिस एस तमिलवाणन बिल डिलीवर द प्रेसिडेंशियल एड्रेस
अनिवार्यकुमार कम
यस यू आर ऑडियो यू कैन गिव अ स्पीच पेसलॉन सर सर यू आर माइक आ स्विच ऑफ्ड प्लीज स्विच ऑन द माइक जस्टिस तमिल ओके नाव नाव ओके
मिसर सरवनन मिसर आदिलेक्ष्य मी लोगमोर्ती आदर एमिनेंट स्पीकर्स बिलाउड व्यूअर्स लेडीज एंड जेंटलमेन गुड मॉर्निंग टू वन एंड ऑल आई डॉट सेट आई वांट तू कन्वे माय थैंक्स टू डॉक्टर विरास संबद्ध एडिटर सटक कदेर फॉर हैविंग इनवाइटेड मी तू प्रेजेड ओवर द सेशन एंड डिलीवर माय स्पीच देयर इस नो स्पेसिफिक टॉपिक गिवन तू मी बीइंग द प्रेसिडेंट ऑफ द तमिलनाडु स्टेट कंस्यूमर डिस्पूज़ रिट्रेशन कमिशन आई वांट तू एड्रेस इमर्जेंस ये इम्पॉर्टेंट्स ऑफ कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक 1986 तले 2019
वालम वालम हाँ इल्ला इकुदाटम
टॉपिक्स गिवन फॉर द सेशन
वेडिंग नी संदेह रुमा
कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक
ले
प्लीज स्विच ऑफ द माइक प्लीज डोंट टॉक एनीवन एक्सेप्ट स्पीकर ओके सर यू कंटिन्यू सर अहनर्बल जज सर
कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक इस एन इंपॉर्टेंट स्टाचू इनेक्टेड विद एन गोवर्ल्ड ऑब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ प्रोटेक्टिंग द राइट्स ऑफ़ द कंस्यूमर्स देन इंपॉर्टेंट क्वेश्चन इस को आर ऑल कंस्यूमर्स अपर दे राइट्स तू बी प्रोटेक्टेड अंडर द कंस्यूमर एक एंड द आदर इंपॉर्टेंट एस्पेक्ट्स आई वांट तू हाईलाइट समथिंग इन इंग्लिश बिकॉज़ दिस इस एन ग्लोबल कॉन्फ्रेंस अनलॉन्ड जुडिशियल एस्पेक्ट्स देयरफुअर फर्स्ट आई कमेंट्स इन इंग्लिश एनीहो आई शुड स्विच ओवर तू तमिल बिकॉज़ सटक कदेर तमिल जर्नल इस अथॉरिटी कंडक्टिंग दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस वेबीनर्स सीरीज प्रयत्न 1962 दे राइट्स ऑफ़ कंस्यूमर्स आर प्रोटेक्टेड ओनली अंडर द कामन लॉ अपॉन एली केसेस वर फाइल बिफोर द सिविल कोर्स अक्रॉस द वर्ल्ड हाउवर डुरिंग 1962 जॉन एफ कैनेडी द फार्मर प्रेसिडेंट ऑफ न्यूटन स्टेट्स ऑफ अमेरिका एक्सप्रेस इस व्यू इन द पार्लिमेंट ऑफ़ न्यूटन स्टेट्स ऑफ़ अमेरिका एक्सप्रेस इन लिड ऑफ़ इनेक्टिंग स्टैचू तू प्रोटेक्ट द कंस्यूमर राइट्स की गेट द असेंट ऑन 15 मार्च 1962 देट इस कंस्ट्रेटर्स इंटरनेशनल कंस्यूमर डे सिमिलरली अवर लॉ यालीय लॉ कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक 1986 वस गिवन असेंट बाय द प्रेसिडेंट ऑफ़ इंडिया अंडर 24 डिसंबर 1986 देट वस रेगुलेस आस कंस्यूमर डे नेशनल कंस्यूमर डे नाउ द एक्ट आस बीन रिपेंड बाय द प्रेसिडेंट एक 2019 अंडर सेक्शन 107 ऑफ़ द प्रेसिडेंट एक बट अवर व्हाटएवर इट बी द इंपॉर्टेंट एस्पेक्ट इस तू प्रोटेक्ट द राइट्स ऑफ़ द कंस्यूमर्स यू नो एवरीवन इस एन कंस्यूमर इन द वर्ल्ड नो एक्सेप्शन इन अपर्टिकुलर केस वन मै बी ऑपोसिट पार्टी बिकॉज़ वी नीड फूड सेल्टर नो थिंग्स मेडिकल फैसिलिटीज ट्रांसपोर्ट फैसिलिटीज एंड ऑल आदर फैसिलिटीज देन को इस एन कंस्यूमर एनी पर्सन परचेसिंग एनी गुड्स और कमोडिटी फॉर कंसलरेशन और अवेलिंग एनी सर्विस इनपुटिंग मेडिकल सर्विस और आदर सर्विसेस बट द परचेसिंग गुड्स शुड नॉट बी फॉर रिसेव और फॉर कमर्शियल पर्पस अन्यावेज यू लवी एन कंफ्यूमर कंस्यूमर नो आस पर इस द रिट्रेशन सिस्टम इस कंसर्न इट इस एन त्री टायर सिस्टम यालीय आस पर द एक 2019 86 आस वेल आस द प्रेसिडेंट एक 2019 द त्री टायर सिस्टम इस आस इट इस यालीय द डिस्ट्रिक्ट लेवल कोर्ट वस कॉल्ड कंस्यूमर डिस्पूज़ रिट्रेशन फॉरम नाउ द फॉर्म आस बीन चेंज्ड ऐस कमिशन नाउ ऑल डिस्ट्रिक्ट कंस्यूमर कोर्स आर कॉल्ड डिस्ट्रिक्ट कंस्यूमर डिस्पूज़ रिट्रेशन कमिशन स्टेट कमिशन आस इट इस द स्टेट कंस्यूमर डिस्पूज़ रिट्रेशन कमिशन नेशनल कमिशन नेशनल कंस्यूमर डिस्पूज़ रिट्रेशन कमिशन दिस डिस्ट्रिक्ट कमिशन इस प्रेजेडेड बाय एथर यस सर्विंग डिसीजन और यस फार्मर डिसीजन आते आयज अब बिना द आयज ऑफ़ 65 ईयर्स देयरफुअर इट इस मैंडेट देट यू मस्ट बी यस बीन सर्व आस एन डिसीजन और सर्व फॉर अबाउट 10 ईयर्स इन द जुडिशियरी आदर तू मेंबर्स शुड बी ग्रेजुएट्स अबाउट द आयज ऑफ़ 35 एंड वन शुड बी एन लेडी आउट द त्री देयरफुअर सोचल जस्टिस इस मेंटेन आस पर द यालीय एक आस वेल आस द प्रेसिडेंट एक सिमिलरली इन द स्टेट कमिशन द प्रेसिडेंट शुड बी एन जडी हैविंग सर्व आस एन हाइट कोर्ट और फार्मर जड बिना द आयज ऑफ़ 65 नाउ यालीय तू 67 इन द नेशनल कमिशन द प्रेसिडेंट यस फार्मर जड ऑफ़ द सुप्रीम कोर्ट और सर्विंग जड ऑफ़ द सुप्रीम कोर्ट यू नो द प्रेसिडेंट चैम्स अन अहनर्बल मिस्टर जस्टिस अर्क गैदरवाल द वेरी रिस्पेक्टेबल प्रेसिडेंट यू वस फार्मर जड ऑफ़ द मेडासाइड कोर्ट एंड आस यस जड ऑफ़ द सुप्रीम कोर्ट नाउ द मेंबर्स इन द कमिशन स्टेट कमिशन आर वन शुड बी एन जुडिशियल मेंबर आदर शुड बी नॉन जुडिशियल मेंबर वी हो सर्फिट बेंच आल्सो अट मधुरी देन आल्सो देयर इस वन जुडिशियल मेंबर वन नॉन जुडिशियल मेंबर जुडिशियल मेंबर पुड़ा बीन डिस्ट्रिक्ट जड बिना द आयज ऑफ़ 65 नॉन जुडिशियल एन ग्रेजुएट द आयज लिमिट इस देख वन शुड बी एन लेडी देट इस एन हायराक्ट आई कैन प्रोबली से देट आवर कमिशन इस फंक्शनिंग वेल वी हो 32 डिस्ट्रिक्ट कमिशन आते प्रेसिडेंट एंड यस सर्फिट बेंच आल्सो इन द सदन स्टेट्स वी हो द हाईएस्ट नंबर ऑफ़ कोर्स एंड डिस्पूज़ इस आल्सो मो आई कैन से एवं डुरिंग कोराना वी हो कंडक्टेड वीडियो कॉन्फ्रेंसिंग कोर्स वी हो डिस्पूज़ निली 380 केसेस डुरिंग द कोराना पीरियड आई थिंक देट इस मै बी द हाईएस्ट नंबर नॉट न्यूमेरिकल एवं वी आर मेंटेन एक्सटेंडेड सिमिलरली वी हो कंडक्टेड सो मेनी अवैरनेस प्रोग्राम्स थ्रू आउट द स्टेट इन वैरियस इनोसिटीज लाइक मनोमणि सुद्राण इनोसिटी लॉ इनोसिटी दिस सविदा इनोसिटी एंड सो मेनी आदर इनोसिटीज एंड आस वेल आस कॉलेजेस बिकॉज़ द कंस्यूमर अवैरनेस वेरी इस वेरी वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट आस आई से एवरीवन इस एन कंस्यूमर देयर मस्ट नो दे राइट्स देयर मस्ट नो देट एंडेड गुड्स आर बीन स्लाइड फॉर ए रिसेंबल प्राइस देट शुड बी अनफेयर देट शुड नॉट बी एन अनफेयर ट्रेड प्रैक्टिस अनफेयर ट्रेड प्रैक्टिस यू नो अनफेयर ट्रेड प्रैक्टिस मींस अनजस्ट एंडिशन शुड बी द ऑब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ द सेलर और द सर्विस प्रोवाइडर देन इट विल बी अनफेयर ट्रेड प्रैक्टिस देट इस अगेंस्ट द कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक देट इस अगेंस्ट ऑब्जेक्ट ऑफ़ कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक आई कैन से एवं आई कैन गिव सम इल्लुस्टेशन डिसाइडेड केसेस बाय द कमिशन बिकॉज़ द टाइम इस वेरी शॉट आई कैन आई केनॉट आई मीन नितास लक्ष्मण रेगा आई देट वस पुट बाय माय फ्रेंड डॉक्टर विरास संबद्ध द एडिटर ऑफ़ सटक कदेर ही सेड सो मेनी थिंग्स अबाउट मी मै आई एम हैप्पी बट इट मै नॉट बी ट्रू बिकॉज़ आई एम नॉट सच एन ग्रेट प्रेसिडेंट आई एन एनर्जी प्रेसिडेंट लाइक एनीबडी नाउ आई वांट तू से हेयर व्हाय देट इस एन नीड फॉर कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक व्हाय देट इस इम्पॉर्टेंट्स वी सेलिब्रेट दिस ह्यूमन राइट्स डे इंटरनेशनल ह्यूमन डे बट सो मेनी एक्स आर अवेलेबल सो मेनी स्टाचू आर अवेलेबल व्हाय वी गिव इम्पॉर्टेंट्स फॉर द कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक देट इस द मेन क्वेश्चन द रीजन इस इट आस सच एन इंपॉर्टेंट इम्पॉर्टेंट्स इन द वर्ल्ड सोसाइटी इन द ह्यूमन सोसाइटी बिकॉज़ एवरीवन नीड स्टैंडेड आई मीन कमोडिटीज एवं फूड द मेडिसिन इस कंसर्न देयर मस्ट शुड से व्हाट आर द कंटेंस ऑफ़ द मेडिसिन द कॉम्पोनेंट्स ऑफ़ द मेडिसिन एंड द मैन्युफैक्चरेट डे एक्सपायर्ड डे सिमिलरली इफ एवं टॉयज तू द चुड़ैन इट मस्ट हैव आईएसआई सिमिलरली अकमार फॉर अग्रीकल्चर प्रोडक्ट्स देयरफुअर दिस स्टैंडेड्स सेस देट देम पीपल शुड एनजॉय दे बेनिफिट इट शुड बी एन राइट लाइक यू नो देस ह्यूमन राइट्स डिक्लेरेशन 1948 डिसंबर 10 देट वस निकल्ड बाय न्यूटन स्टेट्स ऑफ़ अमेरिका दे 30 आर्टिकल्स आर अवेलेबल दिस कंस्यूमर इट इस आल्स इनपॉर्टेंट इंडायरेक्टली देट आस बीन स्टेटेड दो दिस ह्यूमन राइट्स डिक्लेरेशन डे 1948 फर्स्ट द कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक यूएसए इन 1962 गेयर 86 बट एवं देन वी हो कांस्टेंट वी हो वी आर मोस्टली आई मीन अपोलिन द व्यूज आफ़ द यूएनओ डिक्लेड बाय वे आफ़ दिस ह्यूमन राइट्स राइट्स ह्यूमन राइट्स डिक्लेरेशन नाउ वी कैन से फॉर हेल्थी सोसाइटी वी नीड विथ एन स्टैंडेड फूड वाटर आदर फैसिलिटीज एवरीथिंग शुड बी इन एन रिसेंबल प्राइस व्हेन वी से अबाउट सर्विस एवं मेडिकल सर्विस एवं आदर सर्विसेस एवं इलेक्ट्रिसिटी एवरी एवरी सर्विस देट कम्स अंडर द कंस्यूमर प्रोटेक्शन एक हो तू सेव गॉड नाउ आई थिंक देट इट विल बी प्रॉपर तू सिचुएट ओवर तू अवर मदरक्रम तमिल बिकॉज़ दिस सटक कदेर तमिल लॉ जर्नल इस कंडक्टिंग दिस सेमिनार एंड फर्जर द नेक्स्ट स्पीकर मिस्टर भुतोतिशन इस एन नोटिबल एडवोकेट वी ऑलवेज आर्गुइ ओनली तमिल ओनली फ्यू एडवोकेट्स आर आर्गुइ इन तमिल वी यूज़ तू अप्रिशिएट देन द नाउ वी कैन से
It will be against the object of consumer protection and I said unfair trade practice. For which we I I can say simply some case, I won't go in detail that may take hours together. The point is a person booked a medical, I mean marriage hall, you know marriage hall. What is that marriage hall? Normally three months back, they should have, I mean, booked up marriage hall. I'm already booked for dinner, one letter to nail a panic at once. At the very beginning, there was a marriage. But he doesn't get it, he doesn't get it. Then he got one, he did it for 10 days, he got married. This is my, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. And then I returned money. You know, they are taking it, they don't see it, they are receiving it, they are paying it. And then once received, that's all. They don't pay it back, they don't pay it back. You know, they are doing this, they don't know, you give it to them, they are going to do it. They are saying, they are saying, they are saying, they are saying. You know, the consumer commission, consumer commission, district commission now. They are doing it, they are doing it. Here, they are saying, governed by contract, when it is governed by contract. No, as per the contract, they are, as per the contract, they are paying it, they are, once received, not be returned, they are. Supreme Court put in the decision, they are saying. And as per the government contract, we are going to vote on the new terms and conditions. I don't know. They said everything, I argued. We said, that, what else do you know? Because unfair trade practice is against the object of consumer protection. Number of patients rendered by the Supreme Court, hundred Supreme Court. What is unfair trade practice? You know, they booked it, they did it. You know, how much is it? If we don't book it, even if we cancel it last minute, there is some rationale here. Here there is no rationality at all. Here there is no rationality at all. But there is no reason, they didn't book it, they didn't say. Then you buy another one, then you buy this one. This is unfair trade practice. It is unfair. It is unfair. Unfair trade practice is against consumer protection. This is unjust enrichment, therefore, we said as per the nation of the Supreme Court. In various cases, this is unfair trade practice. You receive the money adequately, merely because you are stipulating some condition in the paper that won't bind the party. They are saying, they are saying. No, how do you do this? Now they are giving money, they are in upper position. They are preparing terms and conditions stipulate. But you are in the contract, no, that is not binding, that is the view of the consumer protection. That was appealed by the Honorable National Commission, even in various cases subsequently, that has been followed. When there is unfair trade practice, the person claiming something based on unfair trade practice cannot succeed. We won't accept. Similarly, another case I can say, this is a medical college case. There, some student, his son, his father was admitted in the CMC Velur. Some better than person. He is a house agent. He is asking, he is helping, he is helping. He said, he said, because it is possible. He said, he said, he came before some hard judge, the judge was become, now my, the youngest player, he was in the bachelor. He was ten December two thousand five. He didn't do anything, he didn't admit, he said, he joined before CMC Velur. That is the challenge of the college. That was before petition. That was added by former judge of the Supreme Court, I don't want to mention the name. They said, they said, this can be confirmed. But what happened, the college, they are giving us a thirty thousand, forty thousand, you have to give it for a week. After that, they gave it for fifty days. What happened, he did it. Then they gave it, they gave it, they gave it. He didn't give it. He said, he said, don't pretend to go to the High Court. After that, they gave it. Now, for a long time, what they gave it? Conduct, conduct and character, the student was not satisfactory. Conduct and character not satisfactory. No, I am the first competition, conduct and character not satisfactory. Where can you join? He filed a consumer complaint before this commission. No, the question is very simple, they are saying, education is not good. Education is different, but they are not consumers, that is important. The cause of action is, that is important. Yeah, when you look at it. Even the, even the, the, the evidence is produced. Their father was admitted, subsequently their mother was also admitted, CMC. They are objecting, they selected the boy. Then they give it, they don't give it. They go to the toilet, they go to the toilet, they go to the toilet, they go to the toilet. Now, when you give it, it is not satisfactory. It is unfair trade practice. The boy has two years, the life years. You know, we are doing it. We are doing it for a month, we are correcting it. This is what they gave it. The compensation, pain and suffering. No, you have to give twenty lakhs, you have to give it. No, twenty lakhs. Because, the consumer, the issue is very simple. As per the verdict of the petition, the High Court, he is entitled. He has to pay the amount and that was paid, admitted and they should hand over all the certificates. But all certificates were handed over, but stating not satisfactory. Conduct and character. This is what I said, I said, I said, I said. Now, they are doing it. Then, this is unfair trade practice. Then vengeance, this is what I am saying, I don't want to argue. How do we think? Now, the judgment is, this is what they are saying. They are not going to die, they are going to die. Who happens to be dead, it is not. No, everybody is subject to law, even law is subject to the strictness. That is why we have due restriction, even law is, even under Article three sixty eight, admitting cover, subject to the due restriction. Is it not? Therefore, anything cannot be done by anybody. That signal is given to everyone by this commission. And another case I can say, Dropbox. No, it relates to a bank, the bank has a customer account holder. A D D F. They gave it, they gave it, they are checking it. They are saying, they are saying. They gave it, they gave it. Then they put the number, they put it, they put it. They are saying, I am done, I am done, because we will talk later. Mister V R S.
I am, I am.
Take my time.
Yes. Thank.
They are checking it, they are checking it. They are checking it, they are checking it. They are checking it, they are checking it. They are telling us, they are telling us. They are checking it, they are checking it. A bank, a mountain, a national bank, they are checking it, they are checking it. Another account. They are checking it, they are checking it. What do we do? Where a bank, where an account is opened, we open it. The bank is not visible. They are checking it. Then what do we do? The date of the D D is with twelve percent and also. They are doing this, they are doing this. They are giving it. A bank, a D D or a check, they are giving it. They are giving it. This is a very bad practice. Similarly, banks are doing this. In the checkbook, there is no counterfeiting. Why is it not? They are doing it. This is unfair trade practice. We wrote a letter to the authority of the reserve bank to give direction, but we are avoiding reply from there. The same way, the money is being taken, one bundle, one. Where is the safety for the consumer? Where is the safety for the consumer? Therefore, this practice should also be avoided. Therefore, now, the time is crossing the limit, the limit is available to everybody. Therefore, I want to conclude my speech. Many, every topic, we will talk for a minute. But, you are very generous, your neighbor, V R S. There is no other way, because when we reach the limit, we will do it. It is a reasonable, I mean, restriction. Thank you very much, thank you, Honorable. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Judge. You have a detailed speech on consumer law, consumer action, consumer use, consumer issues and everything. Everybody's life, consumer activities for day to day life of our life. We have to come across every day about the issues. Buying groceries or going by car, going by plane, going by wherever, anything and everything. Consumers are part of the activities. So, this consumer code as well as the consumer act is very, very important. Consumer court can play a very major role to support our people to get a quality life. Our judge is doing wonderful activities through his position and is giving, delivering a lot of good judgments. Thank you for his wonderful speech. I am now, I am requesting, Mister D Saravanan, vice chairman, Central Law College Salem. And also a member of the Tamil Nadu Bar Council. Mister Saravanan is an advocate and also his father established a college in Salem. The wonderful law college, the private law college, first private law college established by him only in nineteen eighty three at Salem. Very big legal fight, finally, they got a permission to run the college. They are running wonderfully. Now, the Saravanan taking in charge, that college is having a lot of milestone to give a legal education in Tamil Nadu. I am inviting Mister Saravanan to deliver this special address.
Very happy morning to all. Respected Honorable Thirajustus Tamilvanan. My beloved brother, V R S Sambath, editor of Satak Kadar. And all the other dignitaries who are all attending this global conference. I feel greatly honored to deliver the special address in this twenty eighth global conference. Which is organized by Satak Kadar Tamil Journal. We all know that our country's economy is the sixth largest by GDP. And third in ranking in the terms of purchasing power parity. Our nation is strong with the youth population, which is the greatest asset that was already mentioned by. Doctor A P J Abdul Kalam. The youth cannot achieve big if we do not give the proper education from the foundation level. It has to start from the schooling. The framers of the education policy should provide the quality education. Which is the foundation and platform from the younger generation to do well. It should be spread over from basic school level to the higher education. The Bar Council of India is imparting two streams of law courses. That is five year integrator course and three year degree based course. Five year integrator course is for those who pass out from schooling by regular stream after completion of tenth and twelfth. And three year degree based course is for those who apply after completion of any U G or P G degree. Recognized by any university. Long back, we had evening course for undergoing law in three year stream. But in the year two thousand two, it was abolished. But we do not know that it is still available only in Delhi University with the permission of B C I. It is a big question, why Delhi University alone? Coming to the eligibility of age of the applicants, when all the other professional courses have the age limit. But we have no age bar for law course alone. Then how the quality of legal education can be maintained? And students of that age, how he will be able to accommodate himself in the classroom atmosphere? Normally, student who is completing his schooling will be in the age category of seventeen with at least two items. He will be completing within the age of nineteen or to the maximum of twenty years. And any person who is completing a degree will be in the year of twenty years in the lower category of age. And to the maximum of twenty five years. If this is being considered, then the quality of legal education will be definitely better in the coming days. The Bar Council without consideration, reducing the age limit is the reason we cannot curtail. The enrollment of the age personalities. If the Bar Council of India uniformly bring the age limit for all the states. People will not get admitted in the neighboring states like Andhra, Karnataka and Kerala. Or other northern states for undergoing this law course. Who without attending the classes, get the degree during their employment. Or while undergoing any other business and get themselves enrolled in the Bar Council. And they involve in the local panjait who does not come to the real practice at all. Unless this age limit is reduced uniformly in our country, this will be in an increasing phase. And the profession will be in real danger. As many of them with criminal background undergo the course in the neighboring states, which is a real danger for our profession. Then coming to the teaching profession in the, in both higher education. Which plays a major role in education, either it be the school education or higher education. Here, I want to mention a few lines from a famous Tamil song penned by Polamai Puthan. Any child, a good child, is in the middle of the river. He is a good man, a bad man, a bad man. You saw it. Any child, very young age, is in class. They send them to the schooling at the age of two and a half to three years, they make their child join in the kindergarten. And gradually, when this child grows, they put them in too many extracurricular classes. And the parents, they roam around to have the social life, which many are not willing to compromise. In today's scenario, a child spends more time outside the family atmosphere. So, what I want to mention is, the adoptive parent is the teacher. The teacher has the more social responsibility to make the difference in the life of each and every student. The every teacher should keep them updated with the knowledge on a daily basis. Or else at the touch of the fingertip, students are more updated in this technology world. And also, the teacher should assess their own performance periodically. Every teacher should inculcate within themselves the honesty, integrity, punctuality. Discipline and devotion to that duty and the students will reflect the same. By having the teacher as his own role model. And I want to also quote the other one, a good institution is based only on good teacher. A good teacher makes good student. Good student will be a good citizen. A good citizen will make good nation finally. Teaching is a passion, but nowadays it is just seen as a job. More than teaching from mere books, it has to be in an experience based. And the students should be given an opportunity to explore the subject. Experiment the same and they should gain more experience, that is more particularly subject based experience. The Bar Council of India under U G C has to decide on uniformity or equivalence of the post graduation course. Particularly, many of the state recognized and deemed university, they award with one year L L M program. Which certain universities are not at all accepting or consider the same for teaching position. The life of that particular candidate becomes a big question mark if at all he has aimed for teaching position as his career. For example, the very old University of Medras, which is having the Department of Legal Studies. They award with part time L L M program with two years period of study. And the Pontchari University is granting L L M with one year period of study. The draft legal education two thousand nineteen mentions that one year L L M shall be compensated by Y M Phil in law. But the new education policy says the Y M Phil is itself will be discontinued. The examination is the most important part of our education system. We could assess the knowledge of the student and also the understanding of what he has learned. The preparation part of the examination is that the students will be applying with the concerned university. Through the affiliated colleges by way of O M R sheet application, based on which the verification will be made and admit cards will be done. Then confirmation of examination centers, officers will be deputed, supply of examination material, setting and printing of question papers. Scheme of examination, answer sheet coding and all these will be carried out in advance. The major aspect I want to mention and which needs attention and correction in our system. By the head of the university and the U G C is that preparation of results and publication of results. And then revaluation and retotalling. Here, most of the universities make a huge money out of it. Then issuance of degree and conduct of convocation function. Most of the universities conduct the convocation after two or three years later. For example, if a student completes his degree in the year two thousand fifteen, the convocation will be held. Only in the year of two thousand eighteen or nineteen. After the convocation function is held, the university, the affiliated colleges will be receiving those certificates of those students. After six months of period, the candidates will lose its flavor and happiness of receiving the certificates immediately. And my suggestion on this examination path is that almost all the universities should conduct the examination uniformly in the same month. And the declaration of the results should be within thirty to forty five months from the last date of the examination. Including the revaluation and also the action taken upon the malpractice students by the disciplinary committee. Followed by which the convocation function may also be conducted within two or three months period. This will have a huge effect in the same, in saving the time and also to those students who apply for higher studies. Either within the country or to those who are interested to go abroad for further studies. I would also like to mention in a lighter sense that political involvement each, in each and every system. More particularly, the education system dilutes the academic nature. With this, I conclude my speech. And I thank. In the evening, I have met the friends of Satak Kadar. The friend who is a merciful. And the merciful V R S Sambath. He is a good man, he is a good man. He is a good friend of Satak Kadar. I have learned about him. I am glad he is here. I am grateful to him.
Thank you, Thirujanandavagle. You gave a wonderful speech on legal education, the problems of higher education. The L L M and the M L courses in Vidra, in other universities. Yes, I also studied the M L two year program. But even in America, L L M program is two years, in the U K is one year. Like that internationally, there is no proper regulation. Even in America is different system, the Commonwealth country is different system, the India, instead of India also the different system in different areas. We have to regulate, we are sitting in the bar council, you have to take a proposal and send it to all India bar council. Now, I am requesting, my good friend, Mister Muthukrishnan. Muthukrishnan, Syria most member of the bar. I have been sleeping all night. I am glad you are here. Whether it is in Chennai, whether it is in Madurai, whether it is in Tamil Nadu. I am glad you are here. Mister Muthukrishnan. I can speak in Tamil. I can speak in Tamil. I can speak in Tamil. He is asking, how do you want to come to Tamil? He is asking, how do you want to come to Tamil? He is asking, how do you want to come to Tamil? I am requesting Mister Muthukrishnan to deliver his speech in Tamil as an official language in the High Court of Vidra. Sir, please.
Good. Good.
Bhai Du, Priya, Sattakadhirin Niruvanar, 2191, Sattapathirigay, Konduruvad, Emdu, Saramanand, Telipirudhun.
कारण कठुमान अदा इनफ्रास्ट्रक्चर फैसिलिटीज नॉट अवेलेबल इन ड्रास साइकोट सोली अरे वो तिवित टारगेट इनफ्रास्ट्रक्चर एंड सोल्यूट एन अन था तमिलनाडु कंप्यूटर तमिलनाडु पुत्तकम तमिलनाडु वायर दर्द तमिलनाडु वादा आने दर्द कर पाई थी तमिलनाडु तीर्पड़ दर्द कर निधि देख कर पाई थी इवेल लाम ओरू पनिया लेट तुम भूंड आंडुगल को इरण आंडुगल को तमिलनाडु अरसा गम चेन्नई वेंट ओर पनिया लेट तुम सट्टा वर्ण तयार से वेंट अपनी तयार से दाल निच्यम आगे तमिलनाडु ले उयर निधि मर्त्य तमिल कूड़ी ले वड़क पुरी एक कोण तो वर्ण अंदर परियां तर सट्टा कदर करते 28 आंडुगल आगे तमिलनाडु पुझे निधि मर्त्य तीर्पकल पुछे निधि मर्त्य तीर्पकल मत्र वर्क इधर हैक रूल्स अदा विदिगल सट्टांगल आने तीम तमिलनाडु मोरी पैर तिवली टिकू डोरेंट रहना इधर इधर कारण उदयवीर कोड तमिलनाडु अरसा का चेन्नई दो अलग बटन निर्मल गणपत दो परियां लगे कलेंट आल उड़ा अब वो पनिया लेट तुम से दबाओ इधर मत तो पोना इधर नागल सट्टा कदर से दाल मत तो पोना पालरूम इधर से या बेटन पालरूम इन द पुत्तक बलिया बेटन यंत्र वरा हैक मत इल्लीवा तार उड़निया तमिलनाडु मत डू बेटन इंतियल यह उड़निया दर्द तार अदा हैक कोड उड़कर पोदे अदा आंगल त्रिनिधि ले वाली वर्ग आगे वे अदा प्रेशर तीर्त उड़निया मान्य बुड़ी कलिल वर्ण दिल्ली अधर कारण पनिया ने मत ये अरसा कम और हैक कुड़ वादा लाते अब उधर कोड और बेटन तमिलनाडु अत्यलंगिल परियां लत्ती अर्यमारी मानसिक रूप उड़ राहत तमिलनाडु मांग त्रिनिधि बेटन इधर कारण पनिया से दाल दा इनरके उयर निधि मर्त्य तिल तमिल कूड़ी ले वड़क पुरी एक कोण तो वर्ण अंदर वड़क रसिगल प्रसवर्म पढ़ना आर अनायन ने करा गए नीति बदी की पुरूषिया मुड़ी नीति बदी मनचूट्ट मगाइल पेश राल अब उन्हें पुरी रवत तिल पेश राल तार अधर कारण तीर्पकल एक परमुड़ी बेटर अब उन्हें नेकरा रसिगल आंगल त्रिनिधि नीति बदी आंगल त्रिनिधि नीति मर्त्य तिल सट्टा मांग त्रिनिधि दे आगे वे आंगल त्रिनिधि वाद डू रहा रसिगल तमिलनाडु बुढ़ते बुढ़ते पाला बुथ दशक उड़ाना तार अदा वरू अदा मत तुम अल्लाह इधर तीर्पकल आने तो ना सट्टा कदर मत तुम अल्लाह वेरू पर इस दर्द वार बेटन पाला पुत्तक वार बेटन के बाद इन द माना टन वायल आकरा के टिकू डू रहे अदरके इनरके प्ली बारगेनिंग अदा आई एम रिकॉस्टिंग डॉक्टर ए विजय लक्ष्मी असिस्टेंट प्रोफेसर स्कूल ऑफ एक्सलेंस इन लॉ तमिलनाडु डॉक्टर अपेट कर लायोस्टी चेन्नई आई डोनॉट अवे डेटा इर्द आलू अवर निच्यम आगे वो तलक से रहता पहला सिर आकर तार बलक वार एन नाल पीएचडी पित्र करा नींद नाल अंग पारण सोल्जर कुट रखा रसिगल टॉपिक रोबो आर्मी आना टॉपिक प्ली बारगेनिंग आई एम रिकॉस्टिंग द डॉक्टर विजय लक्ष्मी तू डिलीवर इस अरे स्पीच
थैंक यू सर थैंक यू फॉर डी फर्स्ट ऑफ ऑल आई जस्ट वांट रजिस्टर माय ग्रेट ट्यूड एंड थैंक्स तू सट्टा कदर दो इट इस अट डी लास्ट मोमेंट आई एक्सटेंड डी माय पार्टिसिपेशन वास एक्सेप्टेड एंड आई जस्ट वांट तू थैंक ऑल डी डिग्निटरीज ऑन डी टुडे इस प्रोग्राम एंड देयर इस नो मच बाय डेटा अबाउट मी आई डिड माय यूजी इन गवर्नमेंट लॉक वाले ट्रेचिंग एंड आई डिड माय पीजी इन अन प्रेस्टीजियस गवर्नमेंट लॉक वाले मैच एंड माय पीएचडी डिसेटेशन थिसेस इंटरनेशनल क्रिमिनल डॉक्टर आई वन ऑफ डी लीस्ट रिसर्च पॉलर्स इन इंडिया हु टच डी टॉपिक ऑन इंटरनेशनल क्रिमिनल डॉक्टर सो टुडे आई चूज अन टॉपिक तू डिस्कस अबाउट ऑन प्ली बारगेनिंग विच इस डी मोस्ट नेगलेक्टेड एरिया इन डी क्रिमिनल प्रोसीजर को सो प्रैक्टिसिंग एडवकेट्स वी आर वेरी मच बोध वी आर वेरी मच इंटरेस्टेड टुवर्स फ्रॉम बेल ट्रायल एंड अपील सो नो मोस्ट ऑफ अस आर नेगलेक्टिंग डी कॉन्सेप्ट ऑफ प्ली बारगेनिंग बिकॉज़ डी क्रिमिनल जस्टिस सिस्टम्स डी कांबिनेशन ऑफ क्रिमिनोलॉजी पीनोलॉजी एंड डी न्यूली डेवलपिंग कॉन्सेप्ट ऑफ विक्टिमोलॉजी नो वी आर मूविंग टुवर्स विक्टिमोलॉजी अलरियर डी एंटीर जस्टिस सिस्टम इस टुवर्स डी अक्यूस्ड एंड राइट्स ऑफ डी अक्यूस्ड पर्सन एंड डी ह्यूमन राइट्स ऑफ डी अक्यूस्ड पर्सन नो डी टाइम हस इमर्ज तू स्पीक अबाउट डी रोल एंड डी प्लेसमेंट ऑफ विक्टिम्स इन डी एंटीर क्रिमिनल जस्टिस सिस्टम विच इस एंटीरली अब्जेंट इन अवर क्रिमिनल जस्टिस सिस्टम असो इन 2005 वर डी लॉक कमिशन हस इंट्रोड्यूस दिस कॉन्सेप्ट माय नाम कॉल्ड प्ली बारगेनिंग विच गिव स्पेस फॉर डी विक्टिम 100% स्पेस फॉर डी विक्टिम तू डिसाइड डी केस सो आज वी आर फॉलोइंग डी रेफरमेटर ट्यूरी ऑफ पनिशमेंट सो वी आर ऑल वे रिपीटिंग दिस अस्टेरेटेपिकली इंप्रेसनमेंट सांक्षेप्ट पनिशमेंट इस एवरीथिंग ऑन रेफरमेटर ट्यूरी ऑफ पनिशमेंट वी आर सेंटिंग डी अक्यूस्ड डी प्रेसेंट इन टर्न व्हाट डी विक्टिम इस गोइंग तू गेट वेदर डी विक्टिम में गेट सर्टेस्फाइड बाय सिंपली सेंटिंग डी पर्सन तू डी प्रेसेंट और डी विक्टिम इस रियली गेटिंग सर्टेस्फाइड डी थिंग व्हाट व्हाट इस डी पेन सफर्ड बाय ही सो इट इस नॉट रिटालिएशन डेट पेन एंड प्लेशर व्हाट आई सफर्ड अस अपेन यू हैव तू रिस सफर डी से पेन इन डी नेक्स्ट ऑफ सेंटिंग डी पर्सन तू इंप्रेसेंट तू गिव सच अन स्पेस तू डी विक्टिम दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग हस बीन इंट्रोड्यूस इन दिया 2005 विच प्रोवाइड्स ए डिग्निटी तू डी विक्टिम अपार्ट फ्रॉम डी स्पेस विच प्रोवाइड डिग्निटी तू डी विक्टिम एंड ऑन डी अदर हैंड इट शुड नॉट बी मिसअंडरस्टड डेट प्ली बारगेनिंग इस अन मैटर बाय वे ऑफ कंपनसेटिंग डी रोन और डी अफेयर्स कमिटेड बाय डी अक्यूस्ड सो दिस इस वन ऑफ डी बेस्ट कॉन्सेप्ट एंड तू सर्टेस्फाइड डी विक्टिम्स एंड डी विक्टिमोलॉजी एंड डी अदर कॉन्सेप्ट ऑफ रिड्यूसिंग डी ओवरक्राउडिंग ऑफ अंडरट्रायल ट्रायल केसेस और अंडरट्रायल प्रिजनल्स ओवरक्राउडिंग इन प्रिजेंट सो दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग फर्स्ट ऑफ ऑल इस डी थिंग इट इस नॉट इट डी अक्यूस्ड तू कम फॉरवर्ड तू डिसाइड और सेटल डी मैटर ही विल बी रिलीज और ही विल बी अक्यूटेड स्टिल देयर इस अस्को फॉर प्रोवाइडिंग पनिशमेंट अदर डेन दिस दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग व्हाट इट स्टेट दस डेट थ्री पर्सन शुड कम बिटन इट वन इस डी इन्वेस्टिगेटिंग ऑफिसर अनदर वन इस डी अक्यूस्ड एंड थर्ड वन इस डी विक्टिम इट इस डी ट्रायंगल फॉर्मेट वेयर दिस थ्री पर्सन अनलेस अदरवाइस सिट एंड मेक डी सर्टेस्फैक्ट्री मीटिंग दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग विल नॉट बी एक्सेप्टेड सो प्ली बारगेनिंग फ्रॉम सेक्शन 265 ए तू 265 ल विच इस अन वेरी लिमिटेड कॉन्सेप्ट इन डी सीआरपीसी विच गिव प्रोवाइड्स अन स्पेस तू डिसाइड डी विक्टिम व्हाट ही और शी वांस एंड व्हेन यू कंपार्ट दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग विथ डी प्रोवेशन ऑफ अफंतसात इट इस वेरी मच वेरी लिमिटेड एंड रिस्ट्रिक्टेड प्रोविशन वेरी मच लिस्टिक्ड स्पेस फॉर डी विक्टिम तू शो डी रेफरमेशन बट इट फॉर कम तू डी प्ली बारगेनिंग इट इस सम्हो एक्सटेंटिंग डी बाउंड्री तू गिव डी कंपनसेशन तू डी विक्टिम एंड आस वेल इस डी रेफरमेशन तू डी अक्यूस्टोल्स सो डी फर्स्ट फॉरमोस्ट थिंग व्हाट आर डी रिस्ट्रिक्शंस इंपोस्ट तू इनिशिएट डी प्ली बारगेनिंग इस इट शुड नॉट बी डी अफेयर्स पनिशेबल विथ डी डेथ और इंप्रेसनमेंट फॉर लाइफ और इंप्रेसनमेंट मोर दें सेवन ईयर्स सो अफेयर्स पनिशेबल अप तू सेवन ईयर्स आर फॉल्स विथ डी दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग एंड सेकंड थिंग डी अफेयर्स रिलेटिंग तू सोशल इकोनॉमिक मैटर्स और विमेन एंड चिल्ड्रेट और डी लिस्ट ऑफ एक्ट विच जस बीन डीबार्ड बाय डी सेंट्रल गवर्नमेंट विल नॉट बी फॉल अंडर दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग फॉर एग्जांपल डेमोस्टिक वायलेंस एक्ट डेविड रिप्रेजेंटेशन ऑफ विमेन्स एक्ट डाउरी प्रोटीवेशन एक्ट डी प्रिवेंशन ऑफ सदी एंड डिमोर ट्रैफिक अफंतस एक्ट आर्म्स एक्ट ऑल डी डिफेंसेस एक्ट जूनल जस्टिस एक्ट आई एम जस्ट गिविंग डी लिस्ट इट इस नॉट एन एक्सास्टिविटी सो दिस सार्स ऑफ केसेस इस नॉट इलिजिबल तू कम फॉर डी प्ली बारगेनिंग एंड डी थर्ड कैटिगरी इस डेट इट शुड बी अन वॉलंटरी वैन इट शुड नॉट बी मिसलीडर इट शुड नॉट बी अन फॉल्स रिप्रेजेंटेटर और इट शुड नॉट बी अन एनी फॉल्स प्रॉमिस इफ यू कम फॉरवर्ड तू एक्सेप्ट योर क्राइम सो प्ली बारगेनिंग इस नथिंग बट अक्यूस्ड इस कमिंग फॉरवर्ड एक्सेप्टिंग व्हाट ही गस कमिटिंग एंड डी कोर्ट इस अरेंजिंग और डी कोर्ट इस फैसिलिटेटिंग डी अक्यूस्ड डी विक्टिम एंड डी इन्वेस्टिगेटिंग एजेंसी तू गो फॉर डी मीटिंग एंड इफ इट इस सर्टेस्फैक्ट्री डिस्पोज्ड विथ डी डेम दें डी आर कमिंग फॉर डी डिस्पोजेटरी आर्डर्स सो हीर इट इस अन म्यूचुअल अंडरस्टैंडिंग बिटवीन डी ट्रिपल लेयर विद इस डी विक्टिम अक्यूस्ड एंड डी इन्वेस्टिगेटिंग एजेंसी बिकॉज़ डी इन्वेस्टिगेटिंग एजेंसी हस तू सबमिट डी रिपोर्ट अबाउट डी अफेयर्स व्हाट डी अफंतस हस कमिटेड अक्यूस्ड हस कमिटेड एंड देयर शुड नॉट बी एनी प्रीवियस कन्विन्शन ऑन डी से अफेयर्स अलसो सो व्हाट इस डी फर्स्ट थिंग इस डेट विक्टिम इस कमिंग फॉरवर्ड डी विक्टिम इस फीलिंग डेट आई एम गोइंग तू डिसाइड माय जस्टिस सो फर्स्ट टाइम अन डी विक्टिम का गोर स्टे स्पेस कार्यक्रिया इनके ना बेन वर्तन अब मुड़िया पढ़ रहे अंदर सेवन ईयर्स कोल्या पनिश पर रफ़न सके इन डी रिस्ट्रिक्शंस कोल्या वरार डी अफेयर्स के विक्टिम डायरेक्ट आंधा जस्ट जस्टिस सिस्टम कोल्या उल्ला वरांगा अब उन्हें डिसाइड पढ़ रहा है सेकंड थिंग अक्यूस्टो को स्कोप कार्यक्रिया सो अक्यूस्टो रेफरमेशन माधी ओके ना कंपनसेशन कुड़ करते कर डिया आर के सो कंपनसेशन कुड़ते अपनी करते कारण इनके पनिशमेंट इलाम ओहादे देयर देयर इस रिस्ट्रिक्शन डी लॉ से इस डी प्रोविशन से डेट आस बिकॉज़ डी कंपनसेशन हस बीन प्रोवाइडेड ही विल नॉट बी अक्यूटेड देयर इस नो सच अन वर्ड इन डी प्ली बारगेनिंग अक्यूटेड इट स्टेट्स डेट इट में प्रोवाइड कंपनसेशन और ही में बी रिलीज अंडर प्रोवेशन ऑन गुड कॉन्टैक्ट सो फॉर डी पर्पस दे नीड डी रिपोर्ट ऑफ डी प्रोवेशन ऑफिसर थर्ड डी मिनिमम पनिशमेंट शाल अलसो बी सांक्षेप्ट सो अंदर मैक्सिमम का बदला मिनिमम पनिशमेंट कुड़ करते किरक अदा मिनिमम पनिशमेंट अदा वन हाफ आर कला इला वन फोर्थ आया कला सो इट इस सर्टेस्फाइंग ऑल डी बॉर्डर्स और डी बाउंड्रीज ऑफ डी विक्टिम जस्टिस प्रिंसिपल अलसो सो इन डी वन साइड विक्टिम के तेव यानक नाम सर्टेन दिल प्लीज डोंट मिसअंडरस्टैंड डेट नौ तप पनीटा पनाकुड़ता अदा तप सरी पनीटा मुड़िया मां बिंगर द कड़ेवे कड़िया द इट इस नॉट अन कॉन्सेप्ट ओवर हीर इन प्ली बारगेनिंग व्हाट आई एम स्टेटिंग इस डेट वी आर सिंपली वॉन्डी फोकसिंग ऑन डी पर्सपेक्टिव ऑफ डी अक्यूस्ड एंड डी राइट्स एंड डी लाइबिलिटीज वी आर टोटली फॉरगेट अबाउट व्हाट डी विक्टिम इस एक्चुअली इन नीड ऑफ इट अंदर विक्टिम के ना तेव अंग्रेज नम्मी यार भी इधर के में योशिका में रख दो इप्पो डी विक्टिमोलॉजी कॉन्सेप्ट इंडिया डेवलप आराम चिरक सदन मत डी वेस्टर्न कंट्रीज ने विक्टिमोलॉजी कॉन्सेप्ट इब्लो दर अलग डेवलप आये नम्मी इप्पो लावरो इन लोडी फॉरमोस्ट इधि यार मुली माय दें सिकर पाना मुड़ी ना 100% इट इस इन डी हांस ऑफ आवर एडवकेट फ्रेंडिनीटी इन आवर लीगल फ्रेंडिनीटी नम्मा दादा वेलीला कोण तो बोलो अक्यूस्टो किधर तेरिया द विक्टिम्स किधर तेरिया द नम्मा दादा कोण तो बोलो इप्पो नम्मा नरेगा पेश रहो वी वांट तू क्रिएट अवेयरनेस ऑन विमेन्स राइट्स वांट तू क्रिएट अवेयरनेस ऑन चाइल्ड राइट्स वांट तू क्रिएट अवेयरनेस ऑन ट्रांस चेंटर्स राइट इधर ला पेश इट रहो बट फॉरमोस्ट नम्मा क्रिएट पाना बेटी अवेयरनेस एडनाइट डी प्ली बारगेनिंग पति बट तुम द सो इधर नम्मा पन्ना पन्ना एन आकून नामक ओवरक्राउडिंग कंडीप पर इलाकोर्ट नहीं में इलाके से लेमें कमी आकू ऑन डी अदर हैंड कंडीप आदत टाइम अक्यूस्ट इन डी अफेयर्स कमिट पढ़ देते का बाय पड़वा गया ना आदत टाइम पन्ना कंडीप आउट को मैक्सिमम सेंटेंस का कुड़ करूंगा अगर के मूनाव इन डी प्ली बारगेनिंग लांग कुड़कर पेटिशन लांग कुड़कर स्टेटमेंट अब रहेंगे यूज पन्ना कुड़ा देने प्रोविशन लांग पुड़ देते बिकॉज़ इट पे अमोट ऑन वन हैंड आस एडमिशन और डी अदर हैंड आस कंफेशन इन अक्यूस्ट ना पन्ने द उत्तर तरफ ली बारगेनिंग कुड़कर आंगे अपना मैंने पाना मुड़ी आदर अंदर वेरी इंकीमेंग यूज पन्ना कुड़ा देने प्रोविशन ले इरक्का मोदा अंदर प्रोटेक्शन अंदर अक्यूस्टो का गया इरक सो इब्लो प्रोटेक्शन सिरके इब्लो विक्टिम्स कान कॉन्सेप्ट अंदर स्पेस इरके एडवकेट्स के उल्ला वंदे नम्मा कान अंदर वी आर प्रोवाइड वी आर एक्सटेंटिंग आवर सपोर्ट तू डी जस्टिस एंड डी जुडीशरी अलसो फॉर रिड्यूसिंग डी ओवर बर्डनिंग केसेस बिफोर डी कोर्ट एंड वी आर रिड्यूसिंग डी ओवर पॉवरिंग ओवर बर्डनिंग इन डी प्रिजेंट्स अलसो सो पिकन चूस माधी रहना इधर इला रिस्ट्रिक्शंस इन अब प्रॉपर बिकॉज़ वेरी लिमिटेड 265 ए तू 265 ल रूम्ब सिंपल अक्यूस्टो सोलिटिंग ना अक्यूस्ट ना डी पेटिशन फाइल पना पोरांगा पेटिशन फाइल पना वोटन अदा वंदा डी कंसल्ट प्रेजेंट ऑफिसर लेट तू वो रिम सर्टेस्फैक्ट्री डिपॉजिटरी मीटिंग का अंग आरेंज पढ़ रहा है अंदर मीटिंग या मून पर में इरकांग इन्वेस्टिगेटिंग ऑफिसर अक्यूस्ट विक्टिम विक्टिम को वंदे इन वो मून पर ओपन द पेश अब मोदी इफ डी विक्टिम अंदर अक्यूस्ट वांट तू बी अलांग विथ डी प्लेटर दे आर परमिटिंग अक्यूस्ट वादा अक्यूस्ट वादा अंग काउंसिल कोड इरक्का ना परमिट पढ़ रहा है सो इन्हें लास्ट दादा वो कमबैंड मीटिंग कोट अंग मुड़िया पढ़नी अदर कपर अंदर रिपोर्ट अप्रेजिंग ऑफिसर के द कुड़कर आंगे प्रेजिडिंग ऑफिसर अंदर वंदे वो डी जजमेंट अप्स पढ़ रहा है जजमेंट पास पना मोदे नो वेयर डी टर्म अक्यूटेड हस बीन यूज्ड इट इस वन डी स्पीक अबाउट रिलीजिंग ऑन प्रोवेशन और रिसीविंग डी कंपनसेशन और इंपोसिंग डी मिनिमम पनिशमेंट डिस्क्रिप्ट बाय डी पर्टिकुलर एक्ट सो आई मेक यूज ऑफ दिस पर्टिकुलर प्लेटफॉर्म बिकॉज़ इट इस अन वंडरफुल जर्नल सो तमिलनाडु जर्नल तक बिकॉज़ इट इस अलसो माय ड्रीम तू कम ऑफ विथ डी बुक तमिल बुक तमिलनाडु वंदी इंटरनेशनल क्रिमिनल असम दमा कंडीप और बुक कोड ना अब बिंगर देना ड्रीम आरक्के डेफिनेटली विल टेक डी सपोर्ट एंड सट्टा कदर अलसो सो इन डी माधी वो प्लेटफॉर्म लक बिकॉज़ इट इस डी कांबिनेशन ऑफ सीनियर काउंसिल्स जज्जर्स एंड डी प्रैक्टिसिंग एडवकेट्स इंक्लूडिंग डी लॉ मेकिंग बॉडी नम्मा बार काउंसिल मेंबर्स आर उर्कांग इन सूरन सूर्य कांगर सो प्लीज डोंट इधर वंदे वो रोमार्क का वो सब्जेक्ट और वो कॉन्सेप्ट ऑफ कॉलेज ले बड़ी का दिंगे इधर वंदे प्रैक्टिस पन्ना पोरा वो कॉन्सेप्ट आए डेट तो कोंग उन्हें के बेल के प्री निगाह वंदे बेल और ट्रायल और अदरक दाना में को वंदे वी कैन अर्न मणि और वी कैन गेट डी फीस एंड रद इलाम अप्ली बारगेनिंग लियो कंडीप पाइट इस इक्वल तो आर्बिट्रेशन मारी इप्पो आर्बिट्रेशन के प्री एब्लो वंदे दे आर मेकिंग मणि आउट ऑफ सिंगल सिटी इट इस अलसो इक्वल तू क्रिमिनल आर्बिट्रेशन अब ला दाना मुकारबिट्रेशन तन्या क्रिमिनल साइड इन नाम नम्मी इधर प्ली बारगेनिंग लाकू नदी प्रैक्टिस पढ़ो सो वी आर अकादमिशन वी आर प्रैक्टिसिंग वी आर एंकरेजिंग ऑफ स्टूडेंट वी आर गिविंग प्रोजेक्ट्स ऑन दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग सो प्रोजेक्ट एड़कम ओर डी फील्ड वर्क लांपन मोदर रोम्बर रोम्बर कमी फीडबैक ना इग्नोर इतना प्ली बारगेनिंग केस प्रिजिस्ट रहे के इतना प्ली बारगेनिंग पेटिशन्स फाइल पनीर कांगा इतने पर प्ली बारगेनिंग लाकू तरकांगा बिना दे वी आर गेटिंग वॉन्डी वेरी मिनिमल सो क्रिएट डेट प्रैक्टिस तू गिव इंपॉर्टेंस तू प्ली बारगेनिंग लेट अस गिव अन सपोर्ट तू डी विक्टिम बिकॉज़ विक्टिम्स आर क्लाइंट्स सो अब उन्हें कोर सर्टेस्फैक्ट्री वारा पुड़े अक्यूस्टो को ऑन डी अदर हैंड दे विल नॉट गेट बीन गिवेंड विथ डी मैक्सिमम पनिशमेंट अब उन्हें को अंदर मिनिमम पनिशमेंट कुड़ करते के अंग नम्मा का चांसेस कुड़ करो अंग सो दिस इस वन ऑफ डी नेगलेक्टेड एरिया और ग्रे एरिया अंक रोल आम एंटीर सीआरपीसी लेमें बट वन ऑफ डी बेस्ट वंडरफुल कॉन्सेप्ट तू बी गेट इट इन प्रैक्टिस अगेन आई जस्ट वांट तू रजिस्टर माय थैंक्स तू डॉक्टर संपत्त सर अनोरबल जस्टिस सर एंड अनोरबल व्हाइस चर्मन ऑफ सेंट्रल कॉलोकलेज सेलम एंड ऑल डी डिग्निटरीज एंड ऑल डी सीनियर काउंसिल ओवर दिस एंड ऑल डी स्टूडेंट्स इट इस माय प्लेडिंग टुवर्स यू प्लीज इफ यू कम ऑफ एन एडवकेट्स स्टार्ट तू प्रैक्टिस ऑन दिस प्ली बारगेनिंग अलसो गिव बैक व्हाट यू हैव टेकन डी सोसाइटी एंड गिव बैक व्हाट यू हैव टेकन फ्रॉम डी कॉलेज अलसो थैंक यू सो मच आई होप डेट आई हैव केपन माय टाइम एंड आई नॉट एक्सीडेंट माय थैंक यू सो थैंक यू गोरा वंडरफुल लेमिन एंड क्लीन डी प्रेसिडेशन अबाउट डी न्यू सब्जेक्ट रियली इस अन न्यू सब्जेक्ट फॉर आवर इंडियन लीगल सिस्टम वी आर अलरेडी वी अवर वोल
Uh only uh to our country or the Indian subcontinent. But the only difference I could see compared to so many countries in the globe, we have certain differences. The dowry uh uh is something peculiar to our subcontinent, the Indian subcontinent. The very uh uh at the very outset, I should say. In the matrimonial cases today, we have a special act, the the Family Codes Act nineteen eighty-four, we have a special law. The Family Codes Act, under which we have so many family courts. Wherever which of a town which has a population of a million, uh we have a family court. If you do not have a a population of that, the subcourt or the district court, it uh the uh matter goes to them. So, in matrimonial cases, there are multiple proceedings that's happening. That's because we have a Dowry Prohibition Act nineteen sixty-one, we have the four ninety-eight year in the Indian Penal Code. We have the Domestic Violence Act, the Protection of Women from Domestic Violence Act two thousand five, and so many matrimonial laws. Our greatest drawback is that our civil jurisdiction, our civil laws, the personal laws is not common to everyone. According to religion, we have so many personal laws. And when we take the matrimonial arena, we have so many personal laws for the Hindus, the Hindu Marriage Act, the Christians. The Pasi is the for the Special Marriage Act, for the inter-religion marriages. And the Child Marriage Act and so many legislations we have to take into consideration when we are looking into the family matters. So, because of these legislations and that we have so many cases. As lawyers practice in the matrimonial side, we do not file only one petition. Sometimes, for the very same maintenance, we might be filing at two places. One under the Protection of Women from the Domestic Violence Act, one under one twenty-five C R P C. And sometimes, if there is a uh case of O P by husband for uh spending for a divorce or restitution of conjugal rights. We might file one more I A in that too. So, this major drawback of having so many petitions being filed for one particular aspect. Was creating such a lot of issues so far. But luckily, last week, uh we have a uh judgment from a honorable Supreme Court relating to maintenance. And so many guidelines have been given in that. So, every person who is going to file or who is going to be an opponent will have to file all these details. It has a for uh a form of affidavit. This is, this is a welcome move. These kind of judicial activism is very much necessary unless until the legal arena, the legislation have a change. These legislation, when you think uh take into consideration, having a multiplicity of proceedings. If if a husband or a wife, I do not say it applies only to particular party, anyone who is involved. Apart from that, they have uh their connected family, children are also a greater sufferer when we take into the. Uh issues of matrimonial disputes. So, but again, when you see, it is not only the maintenance cases, we have so many uh petitions that can be filed. That can be for a divorce, or that can be for restitution of conjugal rights. And not much spoken about judicial separation town, sometimes also we have that, and the custodial matters. The custodial matters, both under the family courts and before the honorable uh high courts, we have. The Guardians and What's Act where the matrimonial disputes are being taken there. In 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 fact, custody when we speak directly, it may not be a matrimonial dispute. But all these things, a maintenance case or a custody case or a matrimonial dispute with the husband or the property dispute. Involving between the man and the wife together, everything forms part of the 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 whole multitude of the matrimonial cases. As a lawyer practicing in matrimonial cases, sometimes even if you avoid filing the multiplicity of petitions. There might be the other side which will be entertaining so many petitions which should not happen. This will invariably make the process delay. One more aspect which the clients and the point of view of clients, that too when you have the cross-border issues. Now, many of the N R I marriages are happening and there are many, many cross-border issues that's happening. And I have seen cases wherein the husband staying abroad or the wife staying abroad would have got a judgment in their own country. Where they would have lived for a short time or for a longer time. And again, the marriages in India which have been happening in India, you have to come and get your judicial order or the order which you have got in the cross-border. Or the international uh area should get it uh no uh attested here or you have to get a order that this order will apply. So, you have entering the international border, the uh the uh given this platform being a global uh platform given by Hon uh respected. Some parts that we have to look at in these issues, many of the marriages today, the N R I marriages. Many of them are entering into disputes and you have two judgments, many of the cases, husband having one in Australia or U S or somewhere. They will have a judgment, sometimes even the custody battles are won uh in the uh foreign land. And the children who has been brought by the mother in the Indian land, because of the uh treaties between the countries, certain treaties. Because when you go to the international area, you have to look at in the treaties. Some countries will not have a treaty, so sometimes the children are the sufferer, the children will be taken by the father who has won a ba- battle abroad. So, there should be a thought process where the lawyers and the judges for uh these kind of cases. Have to be dealt with different perspective, the Family Codes Act nineteen eighty-four, when we go inside it, who are the lawyers who are playing the role here? As a lawyer, when I enter the family court, I enter that only as an amicus curi. I file a thirteen petition to get the permission of the court to uh assist my uh client. Not as a lawyer who files a wakalat in any other matter. So, matrimonial matters are definitely different from other matters. There should be a lot of sensitization that should happen to the lawyers, the bar and the bench should be given a much more different. Uh understanding of the matrimonial jurisdiction. It is not like other other jurisdictions or other cases pending before, it is not, even though it is a civil jurisdiction. It is not like other matters which we deal with. Here, uh the A D R mechanism plays a very great role. Because when a matrimonial dispute is filed, like in a civil case, you you do not immediately go on file your counters. Your counters is not at all necessary, whether the matter is before a family court or a subcourt or a district court, wherever a matrimonial cases there. Even in the Protection of Women under the Domestic Violence Act, if there is a petition being filed under D V Act, there also you have a counseling process inbuilt. Any of the matrimonial dispute or dispute relating to marriage, a counseling process is inbuilt and the matters again will be held in camera. In camera is where you can wash your dirty linen uh there before a few people not in public. And this uh has given a lot of solution. Sometimes I see, yeah, the honorable courts do not follow the procedures of the family court. The family court does not uh want us to follow the Evidence Act or the Procedure of Court Assets, the Criminal Procedure or Civil Procedure. These procedures can be overlooked. The Family Codes Act, if you go inside, it gives the honorable presiding officers such a view, they can even fix a time. They can sit on a weekend, they can sit on a late night, they can fix their own rules. Any court, any honorable uh bench will not have the right to fix their own rules. But a family court presiding officer, according to the Family Codes Act nineteen eighty-four, has the right to fix their own rules even for a particular case. These things have to go uh go have to be uh sensitized for the honorable uh uh ju- judges. And even the bar have to understand this thing that we are amicus curi. In case we are entering into the case as amicus curi, we have to assist the court rather than being a lawyer who. Uh take the matter in a much different direction. And in this, we have to uh take into consideration the A D R mechanism. The local dollars and the mediation and all these things play a major role. Many of the matrimonial disputes, if it goes beco- before a counselor or a special counselor, there may be cases where the matters can be settled. I do not say every matrimonial case, even though the base of a family law or a family court act is that to unite the family. But every case cannot be united. There are certain disputes which can never be united, then we have to consider of settlement. And going inside the uh settlement process will be in the front of the mediation table. Many lawyers I see, I many of the for forum is being covered, many of you are lawyers or the law students. I tell you, my dear children, going for mediation is not something uh which we should resist. I see, even going for a mediation or a counseling or all these consolidation process is not to drag the matters. Now, we have the high courts, the honorable high courts through the length and breadth of this country, fix the time for the mediation process. Today, mediation is the order of the day, arbitration and mediation is going to be the uh place where the future lawyers is going to make money. Don't think only in the perspective of money, if you're thinking in the perspective of money, I assure you, in family court, if you take the matter to the mediation. Definitely you can settle and your client will be paying your due. I see you have a mindset, it's jittery that you will not be paying your due. I know how many honorable judicial offices take the clue from the lawyers, when you get your fees and they go and settle the matter. So, going before the mediation, don't think you're losing your client. Sometimes you're uniting the family or other ways, you are getting settling them, you are buying peace. Every matter will not end uh in the uh unity. But even a couple, they are going away in their own ways. But as parents, if they could travel for the cause of their children's future, that is the success of mediation. Mediation is trying to bring the parties together and family court matters going inside mediation is one thing which you we should appreciate. So, we have to try to bring in a uh change in the uh thought process or the perspective of looking at the matrimonial disputes. I see many lawyers will resist from taking up the matrimonial disputes because of the time lag and no less payment of money. Or sometimes they do not take in all the A D R systems or they're going for the counseling, all these things. One thing as lawyers, let's stop putting the multiplicity of cases, having one case uh will become seven to eight matters. Then settling will become a very, very difficult. Uh a case for dowry before a magistrate court and one under the uh for the domestic violence before another magistrate court. And here, one more thing is, you have jurisdiction. The law give much more jurisdiction, I have seen transfer petitions and I have appeared so many transfer petition, not only in the district or the high courts and the supreme courts. Now, the constitutional higher courts, the high courts and supreme courts are made to sit on many more matrimonial disputes. And one more thing, these matrimonial disputes while filing the matters, my humble request while filing the matters, if we have a system of. Pre-litigation, even before the litigation starts, even before the matter is being, uh I think this procedure is followed in the state of Kerala. If the parties are called for a pre-litigation mediation or a counseling before the legal services authority, that might not. Uh bring in the ego clash to a much greater extent and this will also serve the purpose of reducing the litigation matters before the honorable courts. And when we go and see the family courts, the honorable judges are loaded with so many, so many cases in a day. Looking one dispute itself is very, very uh difficult. Sometimes their mindset, the mindset, even a lawyer will be doing four or five matters in a day. But a honorable judge will be taking into consideration sixty to seventy matters in a day and they are being posted day and day out in this matters. They could, they should be given a special training, they should be sensitized. And again, the officers, whether the court officers or the numbering clubs, whoever is posted in the family courts should be given special training. Because the parties before them are estranged, they themselves are frustrated. And again, when the officers or people who are dealing with all these matters do not know how to handle them, that will add fuel to the fire. So, to have a different thought process for all these matrimonial disputes, one thing as lawyers, we have to change our mindset. We have to get ourselves sensitized along with the honorable judges, we should stop filing multiple uh proceedings. This multiple proceedings is not going to help us settle the matter, it is going to overburden and confuse the matter. And let's try to settle the matters in the lawyer courts and let's not proceed the matters. To settle the matters before the lawyer courts, you have to use the A D R mechanism, the local dollar mechanism or the mechanism. Uh as a mediator, so law and justice should provide for the people who are before the honorable courts. That too when they come to the fa- uh family courts, it is not only, uh when you compare a uh one thirty-eight check bouncing. Or a property issue or or your labor issues, even labor issues, sometimes these were relationship. But we, these people are coming before lots of stress, mental stress. So, these matters as stakeholders, we have to appreciate today. In the uh uh social beneficial legislation software, lot of stakeholders are coming inside the pictures, the NGOs are playing their roles. The counselors are playing their roles and there are so many people, the special educator, experts are all brought into the social beneficial legislation system. And many of the women and children law come into the purview of social beneficial legislation. I take leave today now at this time because there are so many of my friends waiting to deliberate after me. And I will put the other points in the way of paper presentation before this uh uh honorable Satakadhar journal which they are going to publish. One humble request before leaving this forum, uh uh the respected Samperth sir is doing human service not only with Satakadhar. He has already awarded me for the International Social Activist Looking at My Cause. He is giving so much confidence to the legal profession, I thank him and one great salute to him. And I request all the students and all the participants today, please subscribe Satakadhar. It's one of the best journals to understand law in its very good perspective. Uh I take the leave of everyone, thank you sir, thank you so much for giving this great opportunity. I thank the forum who has been patiently waiting uh for my session. Thank you all, I thank the Legal Eagles L I team for being the knowledge partner today along with Satakadhar, thank you sir, thank you so much.
Thank you, uh uh Mister Adhil Ashwamy Logomuthi. You are always firebrand, you have speech like that. You're always fighting and fighting and pushing and pushing to everything to create a awareness among in the society. The legal awareness is very, very important, every day you are doing a lot of service. Thank you, you've got a very interesting topic. Uh um what your topic is matrimonial cases and family court. You know very well the Madras High Court, aware, many, 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 many court in one campus. Madras High Court, City Civil Court, uh the Central Administrative Tribunal, State Administrative Tribunal. Advocate Association, Bar Counselor Tamil Nadu, like that in winter in the middle, family court also. We have to, you have to fight everything, the family court is a very sensitive court. The family court should take away from some other place to be very common and easy, or common. Uh for polite and nice place to put environment to listen for both parties' issues. And settle the issue and settle the family issues such a way. The family court give a lot of importance to meeting rule and many other things needed. To compare to foreign countries, the family court functioning, how it is functioning, we have to see everything. The twenty-first century, the legal facilities and court facilities should be enhanced more, especially in family court. Um thanks uh to my, say thanks to Adhil Ashwamy. Now I'm.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I'm requesting uh Mister uh M E V Tulese, Advocate. Library Room, Women Lawyers Association, Madras High Court. She's a very eh talented lawyer and also practiced in Madras High Court. I'm requesting, I don't have a fire retard to say furthermore, I'm requesting her to do her a speech.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, can you come, sir?
Yes, yes, first, okay.
Respect your dignitaries, seniors and lovable juniors, a warm good afternoon to one and all. At the outset, I congratulate Doctor Sanball, who has taken efforts to conduct this twenty eighth global conference on law and justice. Even during this pandemic situation, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, 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 we are here, okay, no problem.
I would start the topic, impact of A D R in the present contest with the courts of Mahatma Gandhi. I realized that the true fiction of a lawyer was to unite practice. A large part of my time during the twenty years of my practice as a lawyer was accepted in bringing out private compromise of hundreds of cases. I lost nothing there by not even money, certainly not much so. Impact of A D R. One of the most drawbacks of India's legal system are a lack of effective delivery of legal remedies to the people in need. There are many number of pending cases, henceforth, people are getting delayed and delayed when they approach the court. The main reason behind such a phenomenon is that increase in the number of offenses as well as time taking to solve the cases. Those speedy justice is guaranteed under Article twenty-one of the Indian Constitution. Which is also insisted by Honorable Justice Bhagwati. In a case, Usainera Kathur versus State of Bihar. Its alternative dispute resolution mechanism plays an important role in resolving disputes among people. Which is less important when compared to serious offenses, so that court can save its valuable time. Or as well as parties affected will be delivered with an effective solution for this disputes. Looking at this legal aspects, we have Arbitration and Conciliation Act. With various provisions relating to alternative disputes resolution mechanism in India. Along with that, section eighty-nine, one of the Court of Civil Procedure nineteen not eight. Deals with an option of the parties to make a settlement of their disputes outside the court. This states the importance of such machinery. A D R, wherein the parties can arrive at a solution for the problem by themselves. There are four modes of A D R mechanism. They are arbitration, cancellation, mediation and judicial settlement through local dollar. This arbitration and conciliations are covered under the Act nine, Arbitration and Conciliation Act nineteen ninety-six. Which provides certain powers to the judiciary as well as concerned authorities to make a settlement of the case and the option of the parties involved. The main uh uh main contention of this arbitration is that there should be an arbitration agreement. If arbitration agreement is not there, we cannot approach this court. As far as cancellation, it will be clear that the system of resolving diso- disputes is much informal than arbitration. There is no need for agreements between the parties of a dispute during any time of judicial proceeding. A party can request for cancellation to the other party and then the consigliere may be appointed. And he may meet the people separately and get this and get the issues settled. Local dollars is generally known as people's courts. There is a non-advisable system wherein mark codes are held by state authority, district legal service authority. Taluk Legal Service Authority as well as Supreme Court and High Court Legal Services Authority. It has no jurisdiction over any non-compounding offenses. The focus on Adhalat is on compromise and if not, the cases will be referred back to the court. It will be degree equal to the civil court and no appeal is applicable even under Article two twenty-six. As the degree made is upon the cons- consent of both the parties. Mediation plays a another role in the field of A D R, wherein a negotiation is done between the parties with the help of a mediator. Who's a third part. The main object of undergoing mediation proceedings is to protect the best interest of the party. It does not cover any legal provisions, so that the parties will be not held inside certain limitations of such legal matters. It provides a friendly talk. Between the parties and the means of counseling, so that the real issue faced by them will be found out. And the dispute among them will be resolved easily. There are certain types of mediations which are termed as court-referred mediation and private mediation. If the parties arrive settlement, no person can file an appeal to the higher court in any manner. And why does A D R is preferred? As it has lots of advantages, cost, it is very cost-effective and less time-consuming procedures. People's chance of revealing the truth, preserving the best interest of the parties, informal way of resolving disputes. And there are various important judgments for the cases like Salem Advocate Bar Association versus Union of India. Which involves section eighty-nine of C P C, in the case of Afcon's in- infrastructure and another. Versus Cheryan Wackley Construction, Supreme Court held that all suits of civil nature in particular. The following categories of cases are normally suitable for A D R process. Cases relating to trade, commerce and contract, cases arising from strained or sourced relationship. In cases wherein there is a need for continuous pre-existing relationship in spite of disputes. After the amendment being made in section eighty-nine A of the C P C, which came into effect in the year two thousand two. Refering the matters by the judge as we made mandatory. Sir, I may audible, sir? Sir?
Yes, you have a speech, okay, okay, you can, you can proceed.
Yes, recent development area. What are the recent development areas? Number one, there are A D R Global Center which provide service to solve both across the border. And domestic, civil and commercial disputes. Like, there is also a woman aid uh body of A D R by. The, may please, sir. An A D R body for women in distress specially designed to address women's matrimonial and family issues. They are mostly run by private NGOs with financial support from government and semi-government organizations. Virtual area which is a boon to the litigants during this pandemic situations to settle their disputes. Sitting at home or at the pace of business. By utilizing this A D R mechanism, the statistical report shows that lots and lots of cases are being settled through this mechanism. Especially through this local dollar, where the national local dollar is being conducted. The statistical report sees across the country for the past three years, more than fifty lakhs of cases were settled. And as far as Tamil Nadu is concerned, the statistical report sees for the past three years, nearly seventy lakhs of cases were settled. The success of the A D R mechanism depends on advocates' proper guidance to the parties. Willingness of litigants and appropriate understanding of each A D R mechanism by the judges. My humble request before this honorable forum is to the students as well as to my. Loveable advocate, kindly encourage this forum and educate your uh. Clients to cooperate for this because some of the people, though the success is higher rate, the number of cases what we have completed. By seeing the statistical report is good, but whether this forum, the benefit of this forum has reached the loop and corner of the country, it's not. Still, they feel if they are go- going out of the court, there might be a kattapanja, it's not so, it's a low. I I'm talking about the people uneducated, they are not understanding. So, my friends can educate the litigants to come forward to approach this forum and get it settled. Yeah, settle their matters in a short period of time. I conclude my speech by insisting that the impact of A D R mechanism is people. Get a speedy elected opportunity and a friendly atmosphere apart from the rigid rules and regulations of the courts. The current status gives us an idea that there is a drastic increase even in this field of law. As the laws started understanding, the pure concept of this as well as its effectiveness in the enforceability of law. Through a different perspective, so that the term democracy gains much more importance in the life of the people as well as in society. I thank Mister Sambeth for being given me this opportunity and also the viewers of this Zoom meeting for patiently listening to my speech.
Nandri, you have a wonderful speech on A D R issues. It's a very important subject and also the lawyer can make money also this subject. I also member of the life member of the International Centre for All Alternative Dispute Resolution in Delhi. Uh Ministry of Law and Justice, I used to go off at meetings and a lot of seminars and workshops. Now I am requesting, uh actually, Mister Shereen Moti. Role of Legal Aid Clinics in Promoting Social Justice. She is Assistant Professor and Director of Alumni Relations, O P Jindal Gogal University, Delhi. But she is a very popular uh teacher as well as uh. Written many books and participating many conferences, presenting wonderful papers. But unfortunately, at least she sent a message right now, she's unable to participate in this Zoom meeting. Now I am requesting, uh Miss Murphy, Devadas Advocate and also Research Fellow, U N Europe, Italy. Actually, she's from Chennai now studying in Italy. She's a uh she studied in London also. She's having a lot of academic qualification, law, human rights, many other things. I am requesting uh Murphy to give a speech on India's role on international law. Murphy, yes.
Good morning, sir. Thank you very much for your worthy introduction, I stand humbled and I don't deserve all the credentials, but I really appreciate it. Um Honorable Doctor Justice um S Tamilvanan, President, State Consumer Dispute Redressal Commission. Former Judge Madras High Court, Doctor V R S Samperth, Editor, Satakadhar Tamil Law Journal. Mister D Sarvan, Vice Chairman, Member of Tamil Nadu Bar Council Chennai. Esteemed dignitaries, uh co-speakers, participants of this intellectual session. Greetings from Italy, special thanks to Doctor V R S Samperth for his kind and generous invitation. It's been an illuminating session since. It's been an illuminating session since yesterday. I will be sharing my thoughts on uh India's role in international law with utmost humility. In the words of the late legend, uh Justice V R Krishnayar. The positive commitment of state parties is in the legislative action at home. But does not automatically covenant an enforceable part of corpus juris. India follows the dualist school of law in respect of implementation of international law at domestic level. So I think it's fair to say that Indian judiciary has had and has the liberty. To freely interpret India's obligation under international law into municipal law. However, if there occurs a conflict between international law and municipal law. The courts shall always adopt a harmonious approach. As we look at the Indian Constitution for a brief moment. It contains no express provisions settling the relation and the status of. International law in Indian courts. This silence has given the flexibility for our courts to implement international law. In a progressive and a measured manner. On a practical note, uh it can be observed that international treaties have been used. To aid domestic laws in multiple ways such as to fill the gap in law. It can be used as an interpretation and a reflection to also justify and fortify stance taken. To implement international convention when they are not in conflict with the existing national laws. And to fulfill the spirit of convention and their treaty. Indian Constitution is one of the few constitutional texts in the world. Which expressly provides for fostering of international relations. Which we see especially in Article fifty-one with respect to promotion of international peace. And security and I quote Article section fifty-one which basically promotes international peace and security. Maintain justice and honorable relations between nations. Foster respect for international law and duty obligations. In the dealings of organized people with one another and encourage. Settlement of international dispute by arbitration. And when we look at Article two hundred and fifty-three, it gives um provisions. Respect to legislation for affecting international agreements and I highlight two cases. Firstly, if uh there occurs a conflict between international law and municipal law. The court shall harmoniously as far as possible bridge the gap between the conflicting laws. Is established in the Gramophone Company of India versus the Pandey case. And secondly, upholding the validity of the principles of sustainable development. Such as polluter's pay principle. In the Velour Citizens Welfare Forum case which formed part of customary international law. As we see international law and Indian law in the context of various fields of law. With respect to human rights, India has relied upon international norms and principles. In order to recognize and enforce various rights. Human rights in India has greatly benefited from international law. Fundamental rights and direct principles of state policy in our constitution. Equals international human rights principles. Fundamental rights under the Indian Constitution and international humanitarian law. Contains similar principles and values. With respect to environmental law, Indian courts have played a very significant role in. Environmental protection by applying the principles of international law. The scope of right under Article twenty-one of our constitution. Has been widened through the concept of public interest litigation. And clean environment is now a fundamental right to every Indian. Thus, the impact of international law on India's environmental law. Similar to that of human rights is profound and has been highly beneficial. With respect to trade law and international intellectual property rights. International trade is the cross-border exchange between subjects of international trade law. And examples and living testimonies are the Foreign Trade Act. The Special Economic Zones Act, the Marine Products Exports Development Authority Act. The Competition Act two thousand two, um so on and so forth. India is a member of the World Intellectual Property Organization. And is part of the World Trade Organization. Um managed an agreement also on trade-related um aspects of intellectual property rights known as the TRIPS Agreement. With respect to booming arbitration globally. India has enacted the Arbitration and Conciliation Act. In order to bring uniform rules with regarding to settling commercial disputes. Based on model law and international commercial arbitration, conciliation rules. Adopted by the United Nations Commission on International Trade Law. With respect to space law, which is quite interesting and illuminating. India has played a pioneering role in the development of international space law. India is one of the founding member of the United Nations Committee on Peaceful Use of Outer Space. It has participated in all conference on space law and has been an active participant. India is also a leader of space technology and this gives a greater weight to its contribution on lawmaking. Although India has played a vital role at. And made invaluable contributions to the development of international space law. It is not having a domestic law dealing with this particular subject. This deficiency in the legal system exists in spite of the fact that. India is a leading space technology country and has been actively involved in scientific and legal developments. At the global level. Key legislation with respect to cyber law are the I T Act and the Uncentral Model Law. On electronic commerce. The law establishes balancing developments from India and abroad. Um there has been a need to simplify, there is, there is a need for a yet more simplified. But a comprehensive analysis of cyber law in Indian context for time, for some time now in order to fill the lack you know. Um I would like to conclude by stating that it is fair to say that international treaties. Are enforceable in Indian courts and it would not be wrong to say. That in the recent years, Indian judiciary has relied upon international treaties and conventions. Unless there are not any conflicts with the international law. On that note, I would like to thank the organizers, the participants for giving me this opportunity. I especially extend my kindest regards and gratitude to Doctor V R Sambath for. Organizing this enlightening and illuminating conference. And also for giving the opportunity to partake and share my thoughts. Have a very good day.
Thank you, uh Murphy, you've given a wonderful speech because you are in Italy. And you showed a very important support for presenting your paper, taking a lot of pain to prepare a wonderful paper on international law. And India's role. Thank you. I'm requesting, I actually, the Miss Shereen Moti is a very excellent personality in the legal field. She presented a lot of papers in different conferences. She is working as Assistant Professor, the Director of Alumni Relations in the Jindal Global University. I visited three years back along with former law minister and the former law secretary. And our Chennai person, Dr. Rajkumar sitting as a vice chancellor there. Uh because of that university, Miss Shereen Moti will present her paper now on. Uh role of legal aid clinics in promoting social justice. Uh Shereen?
Good afternoon, sir. Thank you so very much for that kind introduction. Am I audible to you?
Audible, is it possible to come out from your camera? You are all great.
I'm slightly under the weather, sir, and I would request for this to be an audio presentation. Thank you so much and good afternoon to everyone and it has been my pleasure to be invited to speak. During this exemplary conference and to hear so many outstanding speakers and their views about various topics. Under the theme of law and justice. Um as shared by sir, I'm an assistant professor of law at Jindal Global Law School, O P Jindal Global University. And the Director of Alumni Relations. I'm also a Chevning Scholar and I completed my Masters in Law from Queen Mary University of London in the year twenty seventeen. Um it law school legal aid clinics is something which is very close to my heart because uh as a student in the year two thousand nine. I started the first legal aid clinic at O P Jindal Global University with the objective of achieving access to justice in India. Uh law and justice is a very significant theme and will remain for years to come. And I feel that as lawyers and as people connected in the legal field, it is a important topic that addressed in our day-to-day lives. Through our actions, through our behavior and through our beliefs. Uh within this broad topic of law and justice today, I am going to discuss the role of law school legal aid clinics in promoting social justice. To begin with, uh my paper discusses what legal aid is and what access to justice means for everybody. Legal aid is merely a tool to achieve access to justice in India, which, which is denied to millions of Indians. Because of a lack of infrastructure, lack of resources and lack of proper uh human resources. In terms of implementing the infrastructure of legal aid. Sir, I just want to um confirm if I'm audible to you or and should I um continue?
Your speech is audible, you can present your speech.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. So I feel in my personal capacity and as a academic training in Jindal Global Law School, what I realized is that law should not only have. The objective of uh enforcing rights, but also the larger objective of achieving social justice. Which is ingrained in our training in law. Uh legal aid is merely a tool to give access to justice to the millions of Indians and legal aid. The right to legal aid is a fundamental right in India, which has been pronounced in various Supreme Court judgments. As well as been read as a part of Article twenty-one of the Indian Constitution. However, even after that, we will say about seventy percent of the Indians do not get access to legal aid. In order to enforce their rights and that's a sad case in our democracy. Uh in my opinion, in my humble opinion, what I feel is that legal aid clinics in law schools are a ready resource. Not only to operationalize legal aid in India, but also to achieve the larger objective of social justice. Uh law school legal aid clinics have two major objectives. The micro objective is to impart lawyering skills to law students in terms of advocacy, negotiation, drafting, research. And the macro objective is to achieve the, achieve social justice. Uh how is this done? We organize legal literacy camps. During the organization of legal literacy camps. Students have to engage in research, have to translate laws in local languages, go and into the villages and promote. Uh and create awareness about local laws and the laws that are applicable to them. Another way of doing this is to assist lawyers in their ongoing cases. Third is taking up pro bono matters and also appearing in front of forums wherein you do not require a degree in law, for example, the consumer courts. However, law school legal aid clinics have also been uh something that the bar council has focused on by making it mandatory for all the law schools in India. To have legal aid clinics and also the four compulsory papers that have to be taught in every law school in India. But what we did to see in practice is that there is a huge gap between the practice of law and the reality of law. Similarly, there is a huge gap between what is envisaged for law school legal aid clinics and what is being seen on the ground. Uh there is lack of faculty, lack of resources, lack of direction, lack of student interest and all of this I feel can be. Uh sort of um encouraged among students by taking the following step. First, in every law school in India, there should be a mandatory legal aid clinic. Second, the faculty has to be dedicated. Third, you need to measure the outcome, the input that in terms of. The projects that are being taken up by the legal aid clinic and it generally has to be in the culture of law schools. Not seen as social service but something that is actually uh working towards the progress and furtherance of justice. With this, I would like to conclude by saying thank you so much to uh Miss Prem Rajkumari for giving me this wonderful opportunity. There's so much to discuss on this paper and I'm happy to share it with everyone who is a participant today. Um I'm open to any questions that you may have for me. Uh thank you, sir.
Thank you, Shereen. I mean, I, I thought you were not well, but I pray you must come out from your health issues.
Thank you.
You must participate at X Conference in a very vigorous manner. Uh you've given a wonderful uh presentation about the legal clinic. Legal clinic is a very important subject all over. India to be taken very seriously. Our India still have a poverty line. Many people unable to approach the court, unable to approach the lawyer. We are getting every day at least ten to fifteen letters for sir to Satakadeen. We are sending that letter to uh Legal Aid Center situated in Madrasai Court and District Court. And they are taking some steps like that, we are working on it. Uh even though every lawyer should take at least monthly one case as a three case to support someone. That is the very important, then only our practice, our commonwealth countries, different with American practice. American practice is based on the money base, commonwealth is based on the truth basis. So our uh practice in legal aid is very important. Thank you for your wonderful speech. Uh now I am requesting Mister Jayasurya, Advocate from Karu, uh Mister Jayasurya.
Yes, I can hear you, sir.
Okay, you can give a present.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Your topic is the role of state government on court language and legal education. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, first of all, I would like to thank uh Doctor V R Sambath, Sir, Mudwale, Sir, and my college secretary, the. Uh Saranam, Sir, for giving this wonderful opportunity to present this paper. And one more thing I have to mention is that I am just a familiar law student, not yet graduated. Uh so I am a child of central operator and uh without beating on the bush, let's get into the topic. Uh my topic is role of state government on court language and legal education. Uh I have split the topic into two uh areas, there are in legal education, three reforms, up to my uh. Extension to my uh learning from the thing which I have learned from this society, the three reforms should be made. First one is that literature should be a part of the legal education because most of the judges uh uh. Justice Tamilwanans, who is uh who is heading the chair, is also a well-known legal nominee for the law. For the layman, he is well-known for his literature, Krishna and the Tamil literature. And Justice Krishnayar, who is people's justice, he is also well-known for uh among all the people in India. Big uh why he is known for his judgment is one of the reasons. But the richness among the, on the English language and the command on English language is much more important. And okay, it would also help the advocates and the judges uh to interact in an interactive way to lead the cases in an interactive method. Uh for an example, I would like to quote Commissioner of Income Tax versus Arvin Reddy. In that judgment, it comprises of two pages only, but Krishnayar has given an enormous amount of uh. Exa- quiet, quiet citations like that kind of stuff. It is really a great honor to get these kinds of justice only when they are getting a literature. As a part of their legal education and then technology. Technology should be adapted to, not only in the legal education system, but also in. Uh in the legal sector also, where legal uh Professor David Wilkinson, who is a professor in Harvard Law School. Has said that law. law is very slow in adopting the technology. That's the most important thing where artificial intelligence, if it comes into the law sector, then the cases will get resolved in a speedy way where we can't keep the artificial intelligence method to each and every case. But we can raise into particular amount of cases which are related to contract or else to any other like motor accident, claim accident, cases like that kind of stuff. And then the third suggestion which I would like to give is that law education should be given on the state languages, which is the most important thing. In Tamil Nadu, we are pioneering in that way. If we learn in our mother tongue, we can excel in all the positions on each and every sectors. Because Sunan Sin Madala said that if we speak in a language which is unknown to him, it will reach to his mind and he will see a response to that manner. If we speak in his native language, it will go straightly to the heart and then he will reply according to it. So educating in the state language is the most important thing, which means of a native. And getting into the official languages of the court, official languages which should be kept as court languages in the state government. Many debates are going on that whether in India, in the Union of India, we have a system that many justices are being transferred among the high courts of India. And I would like to mention is that Justice Ibrahimul Haq Kalifullah has stated, I think that it is not an issue in this particular issue that keeping the official state languages as court language is not an excellent way in delaying the justice. Here, I would like to mention, I think that Sattakadhe has organized a conference in 2008 in that many senior advocates like Dr Vidhale, sorry, R Vidhale sir and many of the legal luminaries have been participated and said that not only as a Tamil jurist but also many justice who are prevailing from the other states also said that official languages of states should be a part of the legal, should be part of the court language, the High Court and the support next court and all other courts in the regulating commissions also. So I have to mention three incidents there. First one is that Danish authors Hans Christians Anderson stories, the Empress knew cloth, where the empress was clothed with nothing. Each and every people in the kingdom were afraid of that if we speak anything against speaking, then you persecuted me. So the, all the people kept silent, but a single, small innocent boy gave his voice towards the emperor where the king doesn't wear any clothes. Then the whole kingdom erupted and gave the voice, this is the power of the native language. And in Tamil literature, we have enormous amount of examples. In the great Tamil literature, Silaparigaram, Eeraamanna Seppuendu Dayan, which means US king, what you have done. And he asked it to the king, which means that because of the native language only, they were able to approach to the justice and period itself, the richness of the justice and the court languages plays an important role and that is the only important reason why Tamils have been, have a rich of, how to say, rich command over the language and any other stuff. And the third thing which I have to mention is that money need be chosen, there is also another, yeah. He has rendered the justice to the cow which doesn't have a language, right? And then, and then I have to mention one other important quote, one person has died, he had written from his death. The reason why he has written from the death is that not because of a doctor, not because of medicine, but only because of his native language. This is said by the author, a poet, Russell Kamazov, who is an author in R O language which is spoken by only one sixty thousand people. So it plays, so state government's official language plays an important role in rendering justice to the each and every sector of the people in this society. And relating to the Tamil, we are having many justice before in the British area, British India time itself. For example, Justice Mayurum Veranayagam play and Justice Seve Damodar play have rendered the justice in the Tamil language itself in the English courts which are in the British India. So Tamil can be as a court language in the High Court and in the support next court. I'm not speaking not only for the Tamil language, each and every official language of the state can be a language of the High Court. This is my saying and I would like to thank Dr Viarasambhath sir, who has been constantly supporting me for providing the place to be a part of this wonderful seminar and giving my constant support. I would like to thank Uthwela sir and my College Secretary Saranam Dharapana sir. Where I am not a product of Central Opera House, I am a child of Central Opera House. And I would like to thank each and every person who had gathered here and who had patiently listened to this. And I would like to thank each and every, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Jayasurya, presented very nicely. You developed a lot of vote presenting a paper, my best wishes to you. Now I am requesting Dr, Mr Yes Naganathan, Advocate from Madrasai Court to present this speech on the role on Sattakadhe.
Hello sir.
Yes, yes, please allow.
Sattakadheerin moolamaga, sattam matthum neerithareen sapandhamanaa kuritha, irundanal ulagalaviya karutharange, irundanakalageenr nadevithu urukkada. And the karutharangai, the pandemic kaalakilum, nekum aarumiyaga, adarki airparu seeda, namal sattakadheenudin niruvanar. Oru sonaravu, sirpi endu sattakadheenudin sirpi, niruvanar, talivar, editor, Mr St. Doctor Sambhathavakke, nam, andisullavindam. Aarumiyana, nette, negachi aarumiyaga amindharundu. Neethi vea arasargal, sarappana uraiyachinarkal, sattavallunakal, neethi arasargal aarumayum, sarappana oru uraiyai andhakal. Indai negachi, neethi arasar, doctor, Tamilwanan, avergalunudia, talami uraiyodu, thurangiivu, varuvayipuray, mudidhi talami uraiyodu thurangiivu. Adutte, mathiya palgalikadak, mathiya sattakalunudia, thunaitkalivar, saravanan avergal, sarandhu oru uraiyachinarkal, adit thodandu sattavallunakal, sarappaka vayachinarkal.
Naganathan, you have to give a speech on role on Sattakadhe because other speeches, the Prashant.
And the ulagalai, manatunudiam, kiemana nokkam, sattakadheer, udia, pani, midhum sarandhadha. Sattakadheer, kandha iruvatiyadhaa, aandukalaga, thodarundu, Tamil, palathir, uchaneedimantha, uyaneedimantha, thiirpugalai, vadangivu urukkara. Tamil, naam, neethimantha, nadavadikikalai, kunduvaravindamandu, sulukundantha, in the nairathi, averkana, idakal, midhum sarappaka, amindharavindam. And the vagail, sattakadheer, iruvatiyadhaa, aandukalaka, andha paniil, eeedupattu varukkara. Anudia asariyar, andha paniayi sarappaka, seedukundukkara. Oru neethimantha, thiirpuna, aangalakil varukkanda, neethimantha, thiirpunaayi, Tamil, oru bairthi, arakkandu, tani thurayya, andha aluvalakathil, sailpattu varukkara. Arakkandu, andha thuray, oru bairthu koduthu, appriyae veliduvudalai, neendhamadai, aver padithu pathu, mattorilidum, valitsa, Tamil, valunakidum, kandhitu, adai, thiruthi, veliithu, varukkara. Adarki, adai, udalil, adai, arasid, moolamaga, nekum, oru nalaayir, aindayir, kattikal, undale, ulagangai, vaanga pattu, vandhanai, ippuridu, kurindurukkara. Oru moolakam, oru sattamool, paravindamandu, sonnal, adarki, ana, aadharubu, arasidam, ridundum, mattorilidam, ridundu, vandharavindu. And the vagail, the sattakadheer, circulation, indrikki, nekum, kurayvaaga, urukkara, adu, unnum, than paniayi, sarappaka, seedukkara, vandu, sonnal, adarkundu, urukkanda, varakkaringa, anivaram. Allam Tamil, thirindha, varakkaringa, Tamil, pressigundha, varakkaringa, arasana, allam Tamil, varukkanda, aras, sattavidikal, Tamil, urukkara. Ennae avathai, allam, man, thirindum, andha, sattakadheer, Tamil, varukkanda, sattai, idarai, oorvarakkaringa, man, vayinavindam. Appurudu, than, andha, sattai, idar, valarchi, idar, innum, konjam, adikamana, pakankali, kundu, periyasattai, idaraga, varuvadarke, ningal, udavira, vandam. Andha, arumpani, aachivu, idar, nathuthu, vandu, ippuridu, allam, patthirikikal, varukkanda, vandan, sonnal, bhirumbagudi, avakal, vilambaratthil, irundu, kasi, parukundan. Vilambaratthil, irundu, varmaanathip, parukundan, vilambaratthin, moolamaga, avergal, adai, avakal, varmaanathip, berikikulukkara. Anal, sattakadheer, novaru, vilambaranakal, matthum, nambiantha, kadi, eruntai, moriyadu, ungaludai, pangalipu, adarka, adikam, vandam. Oorvaru, varam, oorvarakkaringa, kailum, the sattakadheer, idar, irundharavindam, andha, vagail, maam, adarka, aadharuvutum, sonnal. Andha, nokkam, nareder, namudai, nokkam, kiemananda, ulagalaviya, sattam, neethithu, ulagalaviya, manatunudia, nokkam, adai, neethithu, neethavadikikalai, Tamil, yippudi, nathuthu, Tamil, kundu, oru, di, elu, enbade, nam, nokkam, aake, urukkavindam. Andha, vagail, the manad, sarandhu, oru, manadaga, sailpattu, varukkara, adarka, airparu, galayum, ellan, negachi, galayum, seedu, varukundra, sattakadheer, asariyar, avergal, kum, sattai, idar, sirappada, naam, anivaram, otthu, uraiyapoom, endu, eduthukundu, manal, andha, idal, innum, sarappaka, amayum, endu, kuru, enakke, intha, vaipak, kudutha, sattakadheer, asariyar, avergal, ke, en, andi, terivithu, kulukkara, nandri, vanakkam.
Nandri, Naganathan, avergal, you are a, aarumiyana, oru, surukku, uraini, ninni, neethu, ulikal, sattakadheer, udia, pani, mattar, thiriyavindu, vandu, ninni, neethu, kudutha, pochik, udia, andri, adutte, the, the, negachi, the, negachi, moriyavara, urukkara, moriyavara, our honorable justice, Tamilwanan, the president, overing this entire session. I'm requesting Justice Tamilwanan, say concluding words. Justice Tamilwanan, urukkara, laeltha. Justice Tamilwanan?
Anivarkum, manakkam.
Ah, okay.
Neendam, vayip, vadangivu, urukkana, andri.
Okay.
Negachi, nekam, sarappaka, amindharundu. Parathakavahaila, thur, Dr Sambhathavakal, nekam, sarappana, Tamil, savayina, aachivu, urukkara. Tamil, savayin, sonnal, oru, sattai, idarai, adu, Tamil, nathuthu, vandu, oru, bhagata, saadhanai, adu, anivarkum, vandam, yenndu, sonnal, adarka, moradanam, thayvai. Vivir, resource persons, selas, sonnal, sonnal, padukkara, sandor, kala, aripadukkara, uru, neethavadik, urukkavindam, ipputi, thodandu, iruvatiyadha, iruvatiyadha, aanduka, lama, nathuthu, varukkara. Enakke, aver, BL, padikimbo, de, baguputho, orar, adan, pinale, yamal, kum, vich, seedar, kada, kavillai, uran, ritt, sakal, seedar, averdai, payanam, nikka, villai, aver, sealam, sattakaluri, amaypala, abrali, pala, ve, ivakal, poradi, beti, kuvi, thukundu, ukkara. Avakal, kennadu, parathutali, vandu, mudukkan, ooritha, kare, inge, nekam, sarappaka, sandor, kala, sarappu, urakina, argal, thur, mutuk, shanavakal, pressigundha, bo, de, amudari, mukkyathu, ayathu, de, amudari, le, vaadur, eppada, eli, dana, makal, anivarkum, sendu, idai, yum, adu, mattham, la, oor, naatil, um, angi, varakat, lirik, nda, bodi, le, dan, aachi, yum, nirvagam, um, neethithu, urayum, sailpada, vandam, thiirpugal, varangapada, vandam, andu, sonnal, argal, inge, passive, federal, andu, chalapadukkara.
Inga, passive, federal, antu, chalapadukundra, uh, oringanandak, koota, chibray, irupadanaale. Palavida, bodi, gal, irukkundan, appari, oor, bodi, illam, narathavadi, ma, antu, kailvi, kuri. Parathirupugalai, uchchani, di mantra, amigal, aadakak, varangirukravu, anal, ali, parkavendu, enndu, sonnal. Indai, aachiyamodi, andu, varugundabodhi, anaythu, bodi, illam, thulai, palanali, bodi, illam, antu, sonnargal. Ippari, irupadukkai, la, agi, vettu, athani, bodi, galayum, aachiyamodi, galak, angayarik, kumudiyum. Nadal, mandathle, andan, the, manila, thich, andavakal, avergal, bodi, illa, pesham, badi, kradu. Perusuray, thirivik, badi, kradu, adu, gola, neethi, manngal, illa, varakkadala, adakke, translator, kudiyum. Palakari, vikal, ipparu, amindharukundan, enare, enare, ilu, nekam, kadina, maana, saila, illa. Sattam, andu, anekthu, makalayum, sendraday, veyndam, neethi, athunai, makalukum, kadekavendam, andal, idu, avasimana, ta, agi, thukko. Adu, gola, enak, unnaali, peshivu, nee, prebar, prebar, guy, adu, gola, vay, mediation. A D R methods and then, palavu, harangal, aadakak, sonnargal, athani, bariyam, naan, parathak, kandipattukkara. Nairathi, adikam, paduthu, pilla, muddiyadu, avergal, nee, varangirukkun, nairam. Nekam, kure, vada, avergal, aal, varangam, muddiyadu, inge. Family, kooten, chalapadukundan, kudum, neethi, manngal, illa, paravadak, kigal, varugundan, and the vadak, kigal, siru, siru, sachar, kigal. Periyani, le, eda, kudum, kudum, oravai, stedai, varugundan, nalayi, varukravu, and the mediation, matthias, samadhanap, paduchinakal. And the, oravu, thodarum, siru, siru, thuraygal, tagerkappadu, adu, gola, prebar, kandu, chalapadukundu, varugundu, varugundu, pattham, ellai. Ingum, adu, nadevadi, satyam, daan, antu, sonnal, palavadak, kigal, naan, porakavendu, samarasam, seethu, veyndu. Amaydi, aana, oru, nadevadi, kiparkavendu. Sirupagayim, seera, the, elvud, naadi, antu, solvar, naadanba, naada, vallath, thana, naadal, naan, vallandhar, naadi, antu, vallu, solvar. Palam, antu, sonnal, varum, purulial, vallam, mattam, ellai, allachara, vallam, kalvi, vallam, makali, amaydi. Ippari, amaydi, aag, rukkavendam, and the sachar, kigal, porakavendam, sachar, kigal, understanding, veyndam. Appari, understanding, antu, sonnal, A D R, method, roop, sarappaga, irukko, ippari, consumer, protect, neck, la, A D R, method, naan, pann, putthu, ro. Matru, vey, vey, appo, samarasam, seethu, vekro, samarasam, tak, attap, jay, thal, sattap, jay. Sattakadeer, vallan, inge, sattap, jay, sattap, jay, thar, parathavendam, enandu, sonnal, vadakal, may, kudis, thundu, kudai, irukkala, nadak, nadak, ellai. Palav, uppathi, kalk, paravu, anal, janathog, perukku, oru, kripattan, laki, male, sari, ellai, adu, marthu, isan, thiri, population, aadakak, tholi, irukkargal. Oru, alavana, population, veyndam, adu, gola, uppathi, palan, liga, illa, irukkala, anasachar, kigal, neethi, manngal, varakkad, kundan, liga. Porakavadavendam, anal, illam, selvendu, illai, appo, makalukkai, neethi, kadekavendam, enthu, vey, avai. Appa, idu, aakavu, ravana, sail, thiru, sambhathavakal, eduthukundan, naan, am, ellam, sindhikavikravu, sailpattavikravu. Makal, eno, kiam, selu, rom, makalukkada, anaythu, amayipugal, adu, neethi, mantra, bhaag, thal, sari, sattam, bhaag, thal. Aachiyam, bhaag, thal, ellam, me, makalukada, and the, oru, nilai, e, naam, ninneke, nenai, gururo. Idu, aakavu, ravana, oru, sail, thurachchi, payanam, idu, meeli, meeli, sirappadaya, enadu. Warthatalayum, nambar, sattakadeer, um, asariyar, vallake, parathutaliyum, anaythu. Atal, vikka, swarpadi, varalakke, enadu, parathutaliyum, thirithu, kulkare, nandri, anivarkum, vannakam.
Nandri, honorable justice, honorable justice, either, oru, seermig, antu, so, the, seermig, oru, seer. In the, or, pani, oru, one, two, three, four, in the lineup, the protak, al, mentor, party, karim, puttavu, oru, aarimiyana, neethi, vey, var. Anal, thar, am, thodruthu, enndu, pathal, paravu, shain, puttavu, kar, avar, nee, aarimiyana, oru, mudi, varay, enam, thundukravu. Avarkai, the manat, in, sarmile, enu, nandri, thirivithu, kulkare, murayag, nandri, solvadukkai, enu, sattakadeer. Uh, asariyar, kundu, orupin, Chennai, uh, neethi, mantra, varakkarangia, thiru, purushothaman, avergal. You, prud, nandri, var, we can, uh, present this.
Good afternoon to all. Good afternoon to all. I deem it a great honor and privilege to propose the vote of thanks. For this esteemed meeting, come webinar. Let me first of all start by thanking Dr. Vira Samper. For organizing this informative and enlightening global conference on law and justice. Further, I would like to thank honorable justice, yes, Tamil one, sir. And Mr. D Saranand sir for gazing this occasion. I would like to thank our eminent speaker, Mr. Muthikishnan sir. Who stressed on Tamil as an official language in High Court of Madras. Followed by Dr. A Vijay Lakshmi and Dr. Sendrika Subramanian from Australia. Though she could not join us today. I would like to, I would also like to thank Ms. Adhulakshmi Logamoti. For her wonderful and powerful speech. And I also extend my gratitude to other excellent speakers. Miss N V B Tollese, Miss Murphy Devadas. Even though she is not well, she has given an audio speech and excellent speech from Italy. Uh from Italy, Ms. Sherina Moti, Mr. S J Surya and Mr. Naganathan sir. For their valuable contribution. Last but not the least, I also thank all the distinguished participants of this global conference. Via online platform. Once again, I thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you, Purushothaman. Actually, they're not feeling well, but the Shereen Moti. Avagana, voice, utthu, the, wa, uh, Murphy, uh, uh, Murphy, vandu, robban, alla, kara. Very active.
Oh, sorry.
To practice, is a lawyer in Italy now and also to a student. She, also, Naganathan, speech, and, anivarkum, may, kudai, anupi, nangal, thirivithu, kulkare. Uh, naalai, inlu, malai, the concluding session will be eleven, five thirty P M, same. Uh Zoom ID and the same passcode. Inraya, uh, muddu, vada, vada, concluding, uh, negashin, talivara, honorable. Mister Justice Speaker, Kalaya Rasan, Chairman, Topland Official Language Commission. Farmer, Judge, Madrasai Court, Chief Guest, Address, Honorable Mister Justice Speaker, Gopal Gavda. Farmer, Attorney, Superintendent of India, Special Address, Dr. G Viswanathan, Chancellor, V A T University. Speaker, Dr. G Narayana Raju, Secretary, Ministry of Law and Justice, Government of India, New Delhi. Mister P Wilson, Senior Advocate, Advocate and also Member of Parliament, Former Addiction Solicitor General of India. And Dr. A Tiagarajan, Senior Advocate, Madrasai Court. Uh Mister S T Kandaraja, Attorney, London, UK. Mister, Dr. Agarad, Reddy, Professor, Bharat, Sutafla, Bharat University. Miss P R Prabhu Rajkumari, Advocate, uh, from Chennai Court. And the vote of thanks, Dr. Meera Sudaram, Advocate and also Member of the Detroit, Sattakade. Agavu, nee, allivaram, maal, negashil, charathukulla, market, kulkare, in the maal, robban, interesting, subject, kala, aadi, kalku. Judicial legislation and separation of powers, virtual court and judicial administration, media trial and court trial. Judicial administration and legal language, constitution, morality and reflections, international trade law and treaty interpretation. In the, negashin, udai, muddu, uh, the, program, mo, in the, thiramani, illa, vada, varama, vandukundu, kundu, kundu. For an, anambar, kai, meduthu, chal, la, adu, oru, alamal, uh, in the, negashin, nee, khal, uh, sattakadeer, thar, sattakadeer, maal, maal, maal. Nee, gil, idu, parthiripu, gil, irudhalam, oru, paravik, karam, kattuku, nee, gil, yaar, veyndu, paravu, email, morava, sattavi, silthi. Kripal, aga, sear, la, thirak, katturi, le, edh, katturi, edh, la, un, anivarkum, k, sattakadeer, saravale, e, intu, nandri, kuri. Maalai, aindu, thiravatuk, naam, anivaram, sattipu, nandri, vannakam. Thank you, one and all. Thank you, one and all. Thank you, thank, thank, vannakam, vannakam. Honorable Justice, Grand, Nandri, Tama. Nandri, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. We are closing the.